Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, October 22, 2019. We are located at the Veterans Memorial Hall, 209 Sur Street, Morro Bay, California. It is 5:30 PM. We do have a full quorum, and I will call the meeting to order. If we can just take a moment of silence in your own way to recognize those that may be in need. Thank you. Thank you. With that, Mr. Leavick, will you lead us in the pledge, sir?
Please rise and place the right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Attorney, is there a closed session report to report out on?
No reportable action, Mayor.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. We'll go to Mayor and Councilmember's report. Who'd like to lead us off? Councilmember McPherson, you want to start?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. I would like to report on the conference that I attended last week with my colleagues, the Mayor and Mr. Davis, Councilmember Davis. It was the League of California Cities Annual Conference, and I attended a number of sessions, several of which are very, very relevant to the issues that we're dealing with here in Morro Bay. One was an issue, a session, on how to craft a successful short-term vacation rental ordinance, which couldn't be more timely for us, since we are just starting the process with the first ad hoc committee this Thursday. Then there was a Coastal Cities Group meeting that also focused on short-term vacation rentals, specifically what will the Coastal Commission accept in an ordinance. So that was also very helpful. And there were many cities there who have already passed ordinances, and they have experience in terms of what will get through the Coastal Commission. So I hope to bring that information to the committee. Another one that I went to that was very helpful was on ballot measures, which we are contemplating. And interestingly enough, the team that we hired to do our initial research, the president of that company was on the panel. So it was very useful. I had an opportunity to meet him, and he gave a very good presentation. And then I also went to one on land use issues and what's contained in the governor's budget. So all in all, I think it was a productive session, a conference, for me. So thank you for asking.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Heller?
Sure.
Thanks.
Vacation Rental Forum, which Councilmember McPherson and I held on the 9th, was very successful, week before last. Appreciate all of you who came out to that. It was an interesting mix, because we wanted all the stakeholders there who have a stake in vacation rentals and how this ordinance is going to be developed to be there. We had owners of vacation rentals. We had people who lived next to vacation rentals who weren't happy. We had property managers there. And to kind of mix things up a little bit, I, with Councilmembers McPherson's support, turned the lectern around, like this one, so that the stakeholders were talking to other stakeholders. It's a big difference than coming and talking to us or talking to staff. This community needs to build consensus on this issue, and it's not going to be easy. So we need to start talking and listening to one another. And on that basis alone, I felt that that event was successful. We also had a written survey. Councilmember McPherson was not too fond of it, and I got some other comments that it was biased, et cetera, et cetera. But Council Goal Number Four for this year is to improve community outreach. So as poor as that survey may have been, it was a step in the right direction, in my opinion, in improving outreach, getting comments from the community. The other thing that's going on is my radio show, which I'm starting to like very much, Down Home Democracy. It's the third Saturday of every month at 2:00 PM on the local community free radio that we have here, 973-1079. I talk a lot about vacation rentals on the show last weekend. Every week, I mean, every show, I will focus on a specific topic. The next topic, since it's a hot one, I may talk about vacation rentals again, or I may talk about the financial condition of the city. And I'll have a guest every show as well, and if you're interested in being a guest, please let me know. One of the things I also do on that show is I talk about the fundamental principles of constitutional democracy. And one of my favorites is majority rule coupled with the protection of minority rights. And not just ethnic minorities or religious minorities, but minorities with a different point of view. And it's in that context, for the record, that I'm asking Mayor John Heading for a public apology for his outburst at the last council meeting, where he attacked citizens for affordable living and thereby attacked the 1,100 residents who signed the petitions. Cal was acting completely legally. Cal is recognized by the State of California and is an official organization and has broken no laws. Mr. Mayor, I'd like an apology.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you very much. Tonight, I want to recognize one of our special Morro Bay citizens, Jack Smith. Jack is one of our city's wonderful entrepreneurs. He created and he runs the Morro Bay Skateboard Museum up on Market Avenue. And that museum is the number four top attraction in Morro Bay, according to TripAdvisor, after The Rock, our state parks, and the Estuary. Jack has skateboarded across the United States at least four times, and the most recent was last year. He sponsors two great skateboard events here in Morro Bay, the city's annual skateboard race on July 4th and the Skateboard Classic Race at Harbor Fest just a couple of weeks ago. So I want to thank Jack for his contributions to our community. And I want to report on this month's SLOCOG meeting, the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments. On October 2nd, SLOCOG recommended that the intersection improvement project at Highway 41 and Main Street be included in the regional transportation plan. That is subject to the city coming up with matching funds to bridge a $2.25 million shortfall in construction funding. Our project is one of only nine approved projects in the county, and the only one that has a pre-commitment from next year's state transportation improvement program. Our friend, Mr. Leavick, is currently working on a couple of grants, one from the Active Transportation Program and one from SB 1 to help us bridge that $2.25 million. And then last Sunday, a couple of days ago, Gail and I rode our bikes down to the high school, to the community pool, where we saw the floating pumpkin patch. And it was terrific. Chief Cox was there, and a couple of hundred kids, I think, with pumpkins and playing games and just having a great time. And I want to give a big shout out to Karen Sweeney and Recreation Services. She is very creative. She came up with the idea for this. It's the only one in Slow County. She is creative. She is tireless. She's everywhere, providing recreation services for our residents. So thank you, Karen, and thank you, Rec Services.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis, and Councilmember Addis.
Yeah, I want to thank the public for coming out to the town hall with Congressman Carbaugh that we had on October 10th. There were many, many topics. We filled the entire hour and a half talking about wind energy and Medicare for All, vaping, impeachment, what Congress is doing, and so much more. And we did receive a number of thank yous specific to the congressman, and I just want to let the public know that we handed those to him separately. And I want to thank the Park and Rec staff for a stellar facility rental experience. I would suggest the community center for anybody else's event. That's it.
Good. Thank you for that. I also had the opportunity to attend the League of Cities meeting for three days last -- this week? Last week? Time flies. I went to a number of interesting sessions. One was entitled "Reimagining Modern Policing in California," and it's all about transparency in law enforcement. They cited a number of new bills that do require a number of things, such as posting policies and procedures on a city's website. Talked a lot about body cams and the utilization of those. Talked about evidence and maintaining evidence, but also talked about cultural relevancy and training initiatives for police forces. Very interesting, I think very effective, and I'll be speaking with the chief probably in the next week or so, just to go over my notes and talk with him about what we're doing with regard to some of the bills that recently have been passed. I attended an interesting one, and I think Councilmember Davis did as well, where transportation technology and funding meet the road. And this was really an expose on cities. If you're planning for increasing the number of parking garages and parking spaces that are necessary in cities, you may be doing the wrong thing. They talked a lot about autonomous vehicles. And folks, I got to tell you, there were a group from Contra Costa County that were there that presented. They are working, their transportation agency is working with a number of auto manufacturers on the development of autonomous vehicles, and they are very close. In fact, there are a number of demonstration projects. And that technology was amazing to me. And the issue is that the number of cars, obviously in the future, and the future isn't 50 years from now, they talked about a 10-year time window when we will begin to see changes occur, and cities should begin to plan for that transition to these kinds of uses, and look at alternative transportation possibilities for cities when this happens. So very interesting. I've got a lot of notes, and I'll be sharing those with staff as well. I went to the Delivering Sustainability and Climate Resiliency Without Sacrificing Budget. It had to do with the use of diesel bio, diesel kinds of products. Very interesting, and I have some information for Mr. Leavick that I'll share on that. We're a smaller city. It may not be applicable, but there are some really interesting things that are happening with regard to the development of those types of fuels. I also went to, of course, I couldn't miss the Calpers' Update Session. The news is not good from a systemic relief standpoint, which was really something that the city is very concerned about, working with the League of Cities and the state to redefine pension obligations and provide cities with assistance for meeting these unfunded mandates, and the lack of the ability of the Calpers Board to recognize a reasonable return on investment that will further punish cities in the future. The bottom line is systemic change probably is not coming, and if it is, it's going to take a long, long time. Thusly, figure it out, cities on your own, is the message. And that's kind of what we thought, but it is a little scary. We will continue to advocate for systemic change to be able to meet the needs financially in the future for our city. I also went to a session on municipal finance update. I always go to that every year. It was titled "Death Taxes and Other Unavoidables: A Municipal Finance Update." The news, I was looking for good news in this session. I didn't find a lot of it. The news is that state bailouts with regard to cities' issues, not only for Calpers or other things, are not going to happen despite a $22 billion state surplus now that we have. Such things as redevelopment agencies and/or initiatives that can help cities, when those were taken away, were vetoed this year, and so there'll be little relief for cities on that. The opportunity for cities to be able to increase their percent of sales tax that we get from revenues, and I don't know if you know that, but as a city, for any city, we only get 1% of the sales tax that is charged unless you have a special initiative that is passed where you have an add-on, like we have with Measure Q. And so the bottom line of it is the state is getting richer, yet they're withholding the money from local entities and not responding, according to the presenters, to the needs of cities to survive in the future. They did give some practical examples of how to look for hidden revenue increase opportunities, and I will be sharing those with Ms. Callaway and staff in the future. So very helpful conference, very productive. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to go. Councilmember Heller? Absolutely not. I will not retract anything that I said. You mentioned two things, something about legal or breaking laws. I never mentioned anything about breaking laws or being illegal. I stand by my statement. Thank you for your question.
I stand by my.
Excuse me. I'm in the middle of speaking.
I stand by my.
I'm in the middle of speaking, okay? You're out of order. Thank you for that, but I will not retract it. With that, Ms. Callaway, we were looking forward to your report, and I also want to make sure that we address the issue of the verification. We talked last week, or I talked last week, about the fact that the city was presented with a number of signed requests to overturn or to create a referendum to overturn one of our ordinances. I'm going to ask Ms. Callaway to respond to the count that has been completed with regard to that. And then I'm going to ask also our city attorney once again to explain the impact of really what this referendum is all about, and anything else you may have to speak about as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to have our city clerk respond to your question on the validation before I pass the mic over for anybody at home that's watching. I'm clearly not Mr. Collins. He is out at a conference for the International City Managers Association, and will be back tomorrow. So if anybody needs to get in contact with him, he will be back in the office tomorrow. And then a couple of quick things. On the back table, there is a Budget in Brief brochure. We'll put these in the council members' mailboxes, so you'll have one. This was something developed by your Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, and they discussed it at their October meeting last Tuesday and recommended that we bring these to our public meetings so people have access to those. So there's a few copies on the back. We'll make sure it's up on our website, and we'll put copies in the council members' mailboxes as well. And this is intended to be kind of a citizen-friendly, easy-to-read budget brochure. Secondly, a reminder that the Police Department has the annual haunted house on October 31st from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. All ages are welcome, and it is age-appropriate for everybody. So we encourage the public to come out for that if you are not afraid of haunted houses. And then I'll turn over to Dana, but then our fire chief will conclude the report this evening with an update on the Health and Resources Fair.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Swanson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you said, a referendum petition against Ordinance 623 was delivered to the clerk's office on September 26th. My office coordinated with the county clerk to conduct signature verification on that petition, which concluded today at about 12:30. The unofficial results, which have not yet been certified, indicate valid signatures representing more than 10% of the registered voters were collected, which would qualify the petition. The final official results will be certified to the council at the next regular meeting on November 12th.
Thank you for that. And Mr. City Attorney, Chris, if you could just, once again, maybe for those that aren't familiar with exactly what we're talking about, we're following up on the verification process that occurred with regard to the ordinance. Could you specifically, again, respond to what that's all about and what it entails?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So the referendum is a right that is enshrined in the California Constitution, the right to referendum. Any local ordinance passed by a city council is subject to a vote of the people if 10% or more of the registered voters sign a referendum petition. The unofficial count so far is that over 10% of the registered voters signed the referendum. The issue here is the subject of the referendum. The ordinance that's the subject of the referendum was to provide pre-zoning for land outside of the city, and that was done at the request of LAFCO. LAFCO is the state agency that controls annexation or detachment of land from other public entities. The city is intending to build the WARP plant on this land, which is outside of the city's boundaries. The city can build the plant outside of the city's boundaries. If the referendum is successful, then it would delay the city's ability to annex that land into the city. It has no impact on the ability of the WARP plant to proceed as it's unfolding right now in terms of both construction and eventual operation.
And just one further question, maybe, for Ms. Swanson. The potential cost of the initiative, have we made a determination yet? And I know there's been staff time to do verification, validation, and county time, but what's the approximate cost for this?
We don't have an estimate for the cost expended to date. We did receive--
Can you speak into your mic?
I'm sorry. We don't have an estimate of cost expended to date. However, the county clerk has estimated that if we were to place this item on the March election, the cost would be $15,000 to $30,000.
Thank you. Ms. Callaway, were you, any other updates?
I'm going to pass the baton over to our fire chief to update on his health fair.
Could I ask a follow-up question of the city clerk? Since this is a primary election, am I correct that there would be two separate ballots so that there would be a Republican and a Democratic primary ballot, so it would need to go on both ballots?
I haven't discussed that with the county clerk, but you're correct. They are separate ballots, and any initiative that would be county-wide would be on both.
On both ballots? And that people who have declined to state a party preference would not be allowed to vote in that election?
That I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Oh, yes. Councilmember Davis, your question?
Yes. So long as the property belongs to the county, we will be assessed a property tax of 1.1%. At present, the land value is $300,000 about. Will we also be taxed on improvements as we construct the facility?
That was a question that came up during the last meeting, and still working with the county on getting resolution to that. We may qualify for a public properties exemption, and they're looking into that. So as soon as we have more information, we'll update the council and the community.
Thank you.
Then Chief Knuckles, if you want to take it away?
Great, Mr. Mayor and Council. This Sunday, the Morro Bay Fire Department, in partnership with Latino Health Coalition and other nonprofits, and the San Luis Obispo Health Department, is going to be opening up our doors at 1 o'clock, 1:00 to 4:00, on Sunday, October 27th, for our third annual Health and Resource Fair for no-cost and low-cost medical options within our county. We're going to be giving free flu shots. We're going to be teaching CPR along with the BGs. We're going to teach about Pulse Point. We're also going to drag our fire safety house inside the engine bay, and we're going to teach kids how to get down, get low, and get out of their house if there is smoke in the house. We're going to have health screenings, and we're going to have any, we take all opportunity to also give out information about the possible power shut-off info through PG&E. This is a great partnership that we've had with the Latino Health Coalition. We've been successful. There is a lot of families in our community that are struggling to find affordable healthcare, and this is just one option to do it. And we just hope to open the door up to all of our families to look at no-cost or low-cost options in our community. Thank you.
Great. Very successful last year. One question, will you be giving the high-dose flu shot for seniors, or is it just the regular?
Unknown at this time. As you probably know, that the flu shots are at high demand right now, and they're not in high production. So unclear what we're going to be getting to the day of. But public health stepped up, and they're going to be coming up with a couple nurses, and our paramedics will be assisting, giving some shots.
Great. Thanks so much. Appreciate that. And Ms. Callaway, was that?
That concludes the updates tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Just want to make sure we got everything in. Good. So with that, I think our business spot will be after public comment, because the individual that's coming tonight doesn't close until 6 o'clock. So I just wanted to let you know we'll reserve that for that time. Public comment is open. This is general public comment for members of the public wishing to comment on items on the agenda for which you can't stay or items not on the agenda. I will start with the speaker slips, and then I will open it up from there. And so to begin with, I have Wendy Went. Wendy, welcome.
Hello. Good evening. First of all, I didn't intend to say this, but thank you, Chief Knuckles, for the Third Annual Health Resource Fair, First Five, San Luis Obispo County, which I represent this evening, as a proud partner of the Latino Health Coalition, and we really appreciate Morro Bay's involvement in that project. So thank you. My name is Wendy Went. I'm a resident of Los Osos, and I'm representing First Five, Slow County, and the We Are the Care Initiative. You may remember that I last visited you in April 2019 to celebrate Month of the Child, and I gave you a heads-up regarding a town hall on the topic of affordable childcare. I'm here again to fill you in on what happened next and to encourage the city of Morro Bay to get involved in tackling the childcare challenge in our county. We Are the Care was born out of the Where's the Care Town Hall meeting that was hosted in May 2019. The town hall had a capacity crowd of people who recognized that there is simply not enough quality childcare in our community to meet the need. Additionally, there are not enough early childhood professionals, and families are struggling to be successful in their jobs because of these challenges. Now, a group of early childhood professionals, people from the business community, families and government employees, and officials have partnered to address the local childcare crisis. We're here to ask for your support and engagement. October happens to be National Work and Family Month, which seems like a great time to kick off this discussion. We know from survey data that it took more than a year, on average, for respondents to find care for their child in San Luis Obispo County. When care is found, it is often unaffordable, or the schedule of availability does not meet the family's needs. All of this places a huge burden on families who are working to support their family needs in an area with a high cost of living. This dilemma is creating barriers in retaining, recruiting and retaining employees for local businesses. A senior planner at the Slow Council of Governments recently reported that the cost of childcare is so high that it equals a salary. Two working parents have to weigh whether it's worth giving up a second income to have a second child. With the declining 0-5 population, this can have a long-term impact. And I can speak from personal experience, people are leaving this county because they can't afford childcare for their children. Our goal with the We Are the Care Initiative is to raise public awareness of this very real issue and to work towards solutions. Our hope is that we can pull together our creative ideas and align our resources to make San Luis Obispo County the most family-friendly county in California. I personally got involved in this initiative, both as a local vocal advocate for children's issues through First Five and as a mother. I would like to tell you, we will be back here next month with more to share. If you'd like to learn more about our efforts, please contact First Five, San Luis Obispo County. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Appreciate that. Next up for public comment is Erica Crawford, our CEO from our chamber. Erica, welcome.
Good evening, council staff. Just a few quick announcements, Erica, from the chamber. First, we do have a business mixer tomorrow evening. Sarah Santana is hosting. She's opened up her own space, and she's doing financial planning there, and she's making her own homemade pozole for everybody to come in and eat, and a special cocktail. So just kind of a networking event. And then getting serious, tomorrow during the day is the career technical education teacher on special assignment for the school district is hosting a Future of Work Round Table on how to grow local talent in our region. It's tomorrow at Questa College. It starts at 8:00 AM for registration. I asked Liz Moore if it was okay to make an announcement. I think we're good to go. So if you haven't registered, come tomorrow, 8:00 AM, room 5401, on the Questa College campus. And then just a big public thank you to John Elliott. He owns Mike's Barber Shop. I mean, he's all over the community. He is the force behind the Halloween trick-or-treat. That'll be happening 3:00 to 5:00, 3:30 to 5:30, starting at Grandma's Frozen Yogurt and Waffles. Streets will be closed off. It's such a great, kind of a fun, family-centric celebration of community, and he's partnered with City Recreation on that. And the Chamber helps him by putting businesses on the map. So if there's a business who hasn't yet signed up for the map, they want to give out candy and see all the kids in their families in cute costumes, give us a call or email info@morochamber.org. And that's it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Erica. Appreciate that. Next up for general public comment is Rich Robb? Did I get it right? R-I-U-B?
Yes.
Hey, Rich, welcome.
Thank you. Hearing all these serious things, mine's kind of serious. I played pickleball at Del Mar, and I was all done one day. I played pickleball at Del Mar, and I was all done one day, and I was sitting on a little metal bench outside, and a little kid was running around with his little scooter, you know, just running around on the basketball court. And I was watching him, and I was looking around, there was no parent visible. Oh, that's strange. And then it kind of dawned on me that when you look towards the playground, you can't see clearly, because there's hills. And I was thinking as a, I'm a great-grandparent, but when I was a parent, I would've had to choose between watching my child at the playground, or watching my child running scooter, shoot hoop, you know, play basketball. And I know that the city has recently received, or will receive, $200,000 to improve parks and rec. And at least that's what the paper said. And I think that it might be worthwhile to use part of that to relocate the basketball court to a more advantageous position in Del Mar Park, either by the old volleyball thing, or there's that little amphitheater. I call an amphitheater, it's a hole in the ground, but to make it more parent-friendly, so that they can watch their kids wherever they may be. Of course, now, I will say that in the future, it might benefit pickleball, because we are hoping to build to eight courts. But the primary reason for saying it is for the safety of the child. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Next up for public comment is Gary Freiberg. Welcome, Gary.
Not to correct you, sir. My last name is pronounced Freiberg, and-
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, no. And I don't mean to correct you at all. It's just I wouldn't want anybody else, you know, to get the blame. I am a partner with Pacific Street cottages, and we're located on Pacific Street in the commercial area, right by Market. And thank you for allowing me to address the item about the 3% tax, and if I'm gonna be honest with you, I will. The World Series is on, so thank you for letting me do this now. I appreciate that. But our situation is, first of all, we're definitely a team player, and very supportive of what the city's done, and really appreciated what the event that we had a couple weeks ago. We're looking at an assessment, additional assessment of the 3%, of somewhere in the neighborhood of 10,000 to 12,000 dollars for us. And that's not a small amount, you know, on top of also the sewer increase that has happened. So I've thought about it, that if I were going to hire a marketing company and pay them 10,000 to 12,000 dollars a year, I would ask that marketing company for benchmarks. Give me something that is measurable, so that the investment that I am making with you, I have a way of knowing what kind of return that I'm getting for my money. Because as a businessperson, everybody knows you have to do that. If you're spending money, you spend money to make money. And the attitude, what I would really like to see is for a plan to be made. I read the details of the announcement, and I see that there is a little bit of wiggle room, that if there were sufficient protests, 50% or more of the assessment, that this decision could be delayed for a year. And what I would like to suggest is that instead of delaying it because of protest, let's delay it so that we can put a plan together, so that we can say, this is not a tax grab to the vacation rental industry. This is something for us to be able to generate additional visitation, additional tourism. And I think that, I hate to sound corny, but I thought, let's move forward together, and devise ways that we are a team, and that the assessment is a return of investment for our businesses. So thank you very much. I super appreciate you letting me come up here a little bit early. Go Nats.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Next up for public comment is Meredith Bates. Welcome, Meredith.
Meredith Bates, Morro Bay resident. Oh, I first wanted to thank Jeff and Marlis for that really great short-term rental workshop seminar. It was really, I liked the way you handled it, so we got to speak to the audience, and the cards we got to write on, and the survey, and it was robustly attended. There was lots of people there, which is fabulous. I wanted to talk to you about a letter I sent on October 12th, an email, and I attached a letter from Commission on Aging, and I put a little bit of information up there about Commission on Aging. It's a county organization. It represents probably 20 to 30 nonprofit and government organizations that help seniors in our county. And they sent a letter to the Board of Supervisors with expressing concerns about the power shut-offs, particularly how it will affect seniors. We have a lot of seniors in our town. Some estimates are 27% are older adults here, and many are on some kind of electric device that provides life support. It could be oxygen, it could be an electric wheelchair, other things that are very important for seniors to be able to manage their health. And in the letter, and I sent it to you by email, Commission on Aging asked the Board of Supervisors to investigate and look into other ways of handling things regarding the power shut-offs. They are asking the supervisors to communicate with the PUC and with PG&E, so that we don't have problems for our seniors. People are afraid. I see these advertisements on TV, oh, buy a generator. Well, that's not something most people can afford in the senior population. Many of us are on fixed incomes, and a generator's not possible. So what I'm asking is if the council could support that letter, perhaps send your endorsement along with it to the Board of Supervisors. I want to be sure we notify all the public agencies that we can of our concern for seniors. It's really frightening for many people. I also want to talk about Item C2 for a moment. I really support any extra funding for the fire department, because I think they're doing a great job in trying to notify the public about what's going on, and how we can manage, especially to keep city services going, fire and police. If there's no power, we're gonna really need that. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Next up for public comment is Linda Winters. Linda, oh, there you are. Mobile Home Park Linda, as she likes to be known. Welcome, Linda.
Thank you. Mobile Home Park Linda has returned. I wanted to talk a little bit about an event that I attended this past Saturday at the Morro Bay Natural History Museum. I have a very special place in my heart for that particular establishment. It was called Skeleton Saturday, put on by about two dozen of the volunteer docents, showcasing the museum's bone and skeleton collections, and all for the general public. There were many, many activities for the children of all ages. The admission was only $3 for adults, and children were free. The event hours were from 10:00 to 2:00 PM, and 350 people attended that event. These docents, many of the same folks that you honored for Seattle Experience, that had 6,500 people attending those things. I'm proud to say I worked with a lot of these people for almost 20 years, and you couldn't ask for better ambassadors. Erica. These dedicated, educated group of people that put in thousands of hours every single year. I was with all of them on Saturday, enjoying their programs, being greeted by my fellow docents that kept asking me when I was coming back. Towards the end of the event, a little young kiddo came up to me and said, I know you. And I figured he must've remembered me from my school group's participations at the museum, and I said, why is that? And he said, you're the Mobile Home Park lady. That's what I told my docent friends. I have another mission, to help educate the residents in our Mobile Home Parks about their rights and the programs that we have been involved with. There are so many people to thank as far as including us in the, in all of these programs, all of the city staff, the city council members, the fire chief, the police chief, the public works, Jennifer Finance, Chris. It's so many, and we really do feel like a part, a very intricate part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate that. Next up for public comment is Jeff Bacon. Jeff, welcome.
Mayor, city council staff, I have two items to discuss or share. The first is tomorrow at the CTE conference, which Erica mentioned. I'm happy to present a proposal, it's a contest that's been approved, for all high school seniors to do self-portraits throughout the county, and it's been okayed. And Peter Hannan, the voice of, creator of CatDog, along with another gentleman who's the voice of SpongeBob, are both gonna be in charge of the final judging, things like that. This is part of a class I've been teaching at Tascadero High for the last three years. We always have the seniors do self-portraits, and they get better and better every year. And there'll be prizes, cash prizes, about 11,000 in total, of which we have a sponsor that's gonna pay for it, so this is good. And I'll keep you all posted on it, but it's currently on the schedule. It's part of the academic curriculum at Morro Bay High in two of the classes, and in three of the classes at Tascadero High. It kind of mirrors a program I did doing movie posters, student versions of movie posters back when. So anyway, I'll keep you posted on it, and look forward to any comments anybody has. The next topic, and hopefully this will go over as planned, was normally I watch the city council from home, and my 22-year battle with Parkinson's has got its adventures, but no complaints. But anyway, I wanted to say thank you to all of you, and you guys are always doing proclamations, so I thought I'd do one right back at you. So whereas usually I watch the council meetings from home these days, and whereas I've had the opportunity of witnessing the sheer mountain of hours each and every week are spent reading, researching, corresponding, checking, polling, debating, visiting, soul-searching, listening, decision-making, budget balancing, estimating and rechecking what goes in to the city councils, city managers, and department heads and staff, all this is accomplished without complaint or fuss. Whereas watching from home, I'm totally impressed by all the positive interaction and get-it-done attitude. Turn the page. You all bring to the agenda and activities each and every council meeting and beyond. Whereas some tough times have been endured and lie ahead, whereas none of the city managers, city council staff, and related team members ever get the thank you and the credit they deserve, I could proclaim a giant thank you, keep up the balanced efforts on all sides for the issues and getting the job done. So thank you all.
Thanks, Jeff, for that proclamation. Appreciate that very much. Next up for public comment is David Nelson. David, welcome.
Sorry I've been away. I have some health problems in the family that I'm taking care of. I'm here to address, first of all, I back Jeff. Mr. Mayor, you're rude. It's right here in the paper. You know, to call these people anything but really good citizens is rude. You're rude. Okay? And also, again and again, we're being told that we're gonna get 80% of our fresh, clean water from the sewer plant. Congratulations. Great job. But I would like to see the plan, and I would like to see the plan reviewed by peer review. I want to see how you're gonna do this, because I've talked to professors that are key people in water, I've talked to water board people, and they have questions. So I'd like to see you put down exactly how you're gonna do 80% of our water, clean water, from a sewer plant. Okay? So please, address that. I'm usually ignored and disrespected by these people. Now, I'm telling you that I'm not a, I don't belong to Cal, but I believe in what they're doing. What they're trying to do, and Mr. Mayor, you say here that, folks, I'm gonna tell you that Citizens for Affordable Living is not working for you, or to make this project more affordable. Mr. Mayor, I say that you people aren't working for us, because Cayucos is building a sewer plant, and this goes with this 80%. You proved the 80%, and I'll back off a little bit. But you can't prove, you can't prove 80%, but Cayucos is building a sewer plant that's way big enough to handle our town for 25 million or 30 million dollars. So don't tell me that you're working for me. I've been talking about this from the time you started this without fair bidding. You ask where these miracle projects are that we're talking about. Well, you didn't go looking for them. You went to a perk plant, you went to two perk plants. You know that those work. Then you put out a bid for a sewer system that this contractor designed, and put an 85 million dollar cap for people to bid on it. How would you know about other sewer plants? They don't cost that much money. You guys are railroading this town. We've been, this isn't new. You're talking about 2003. I was here in 2003. How many of you guys were over in Cayucos at the water, at the sewer, joint sewer, when they were fighting it out over this? Not many. But I'm telling you that this article is really disrespectful to citizens who, you talked about hours' work, this lady just talked about people up here working for hours. Cal people put in hundreds of hours to look at the crap that you guys are pushing down our throat, and if you don't believe it, look at Cayucos.
Thanks, David, for your comments. Appreciate that. Next up for public comment is Dawn Beatty. Dawn, welcome.
Hey, I'm talking for age three.
Oh, you want to go to consent? Okay. I'll move you to the consent pile. All righty. Public comment is still open for items either on the agenda for which you can't stay, or other general items. Welcome, Dan.
My name is Dan Sedley. I live in Morro Bay. I have several items I wanted to talk about. First, I too wanted to thank Jeff Heller and Marlis McPherson for the forum on short-term vacation rentals. I appreciate all extensions by the city council to hear the public on their views about important issues like that one. That one is a huge issue, and there's many, many, many different opinions, but I appreciate that the effort is there to hear us, that there's a forum we can fill out, and then our opinions recorded. All extensions of reaching out to the public, I appreciate, except not consultants. I am death on consultants. Every time you put out a consultant, I will be against it. It's just too costly for this city. We can't afford it. But thank you, but thank you for the forum. I didn't mean to talk about consultants, really. Secondly, I had opportunity to go to the police station today. I had requests for information. And first, I was pleased to see the chief's cancer awareness uniform, and my kudos to you, chief, for recognition of that concern. You've gone above and beyond. Further, when I asked questions of the chief's staff, Sergeant Moscava specifically, he was very, very helpful, above and beyond what I have seen in years past from the police department, and I attribute a lot of that to Chief Cox's direction. Through your processes of hiring a police chief, I think you've hired the best man, the best I've seen since I lived in Morro Bay, so thank you for hiring him, and thank you, chief, for the things you're doing with the police department. Thirdly, I had opportunity, as a member of Cal, a proud member of Cal, had opportunity to participate in the referendum petition signature process. I got to work with the county recorder staff, I got to work with Dana and Heather of our own staff here in Morro Bay. They are all consummate professionals, doing their very best to represent truth and accuracy with everything that I see them do. With that, there was, there is a result, and that result is that 894 signatures were validated by these people working on this process. Not me, I'm just an observer watching the process. They validate- They validated 894 signatures. 748 were, were required, meaning that there was a vast abundance over that required, the 10% that the city attorney described. And so the referendum will pass and Dana will follow the official procedures to make all that true and correct. And again, I'm grateful for her dedication to, to doing things as they're supposed to be done.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that. Public comment is still open for items either on the agenda for which you can't stay or any other items. Welcome, Betty.
Mr. Mayor, during the last city council meeting, you stated, quote unquote, "I respect all voices." And then you proceeded to diss the Cal people. You called us saboteurs, you called us not working for people, you called us fear mongers and chaos creators. And so I would just like to call you out for that and say, I wish you'd take one side or the other. Either you're going to honor our agreement that the council has said that there would be decorum in the council and rather than attacking person and calling names, that you would speak to issues and not to people. And so even for you to say, "Welcome to me this evening" is a little bit offensive because you have called me names at the last meeting. I want to say that in regard to the referendum and the articles in the paper and the press releases from you and the city manager, that you've challenged us in terms of our concern for why we think it's inappropriate to zone the South Bay Boulevard site for this particular wastewater treatment plant. And certainly, we think it's an inappropriate place because of the sensitivity of our ecosystem. The estuary by definition is a sensitive ecosystem and the marine-protected area that's designated in the back bay enhances that critical need to protect it. And so the high-powered, the high-pressure four-pipeline conveyance system, which will carry brine as well as raw sewage within a half-mile of the estuary is of great concern. And particularly in light, if you've seen the articles during the summer about what happened at Puget Sound, where power outages caused two different plants to spill raw sewage into Puget Sound. And with PG&E's rolling blackouts planned for the state of California, this raises and heightens our concern about what may or may not happen to the estuary. And it was stated in the paper that the NEP did not raise concerns or, or call for a stoppage, and that's not true. In the EIR, back in, just a year ago in 2018, the NEP raised concerns and asked that the plant not be put in the watershed of the estuary. But the response from the city was to just refer back to the documents that they'd already printed or to say there'll be more studies. And those studies were not forthcoming in the addendum, nor have they been forthcoming since. So the issue of the estuary is not new, we're continuing to be concerned about it. We think this is something that is of paramount importance at the local, state and federal level and to all of us that live here, to audubon people, to our business people who depend on it for a livelihood.
Thank you. Public comment is still open for any members of the public wishing to come forward on items, oh, two at once, okay. Come on forward, welcome.
Hello, friends. I'm Mary Ann Britton. I wanted to speak in terms of the short-term vacation rental ordinance. My family and I, we moved here 20 years ago from the valley and we've been committed to stay here. My husband and I are both teachers and we've served the community, we've been a part of our community. And even with our dual income, it's a struggle to stay here in this community. Four years ago, my husband did retire and then we realized at 42% of your income, you really did need a supplement. So instead, we opened Airbnb. And we had to in order to stay here and meet our dream. 31% of our taxes, we're happy to pay. We pay it to the city, we pay it to the state, we pay it to the federal government. And we feel like that benefits our whole community and our state and we're willing to do that in order to stay here. We feel that we are responsible vacation rental owners. And like a teacher, I don't feel like everyone should be punished because maybe a few people aren't always following the rules. So when we look at the ordinances, maybe we can just specifically, I'm tired after all day working with children, address those needs and not punish everyone. Also, looking into hiring an outside company, our Airbnb is booked every single night. And we're at like at 100% every single night, so we don't actually need more help getting more people. We have people every night. And all of our neighbors have said, "We don't even know when you have people there because they come and go so quietly." Because we really enforce and expect our guests to be respectful of everyone around. And if everyone did that, just like we expect our children in our classroom to do, we'll continue to have the beautiful Morro Bay that we all know and love. So I hope you consider all those things when you look at the ordinance. So thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open for any members of the public wishing to come forward. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Melanie Williams Mahan and I'm a member of Citizens for Affordable Living. I'd like to address the opening of the last city council meeting. I am one of over 1,100 citizens of Morro Bay that signed the referendum. I also helped get signatures. I have multiple concerns about this sewer project. As an American, I have the right to make my voice heard. I know that I have to deal with blowback, but I did not think I would get blowback from the leadership of this city. This is a democracy. Citizens can try to affect change if we feel we need to. The tone of the admonishment was fearful, and that's not leadership. There are people that lead by fear and they're called bullies. I am helping a group of like-minded citizens protect our town. We are horrified about the cost and the danger to the estuary. More than 10% of your voting population does think that there is an issue. Many more that aren't registered to vote here agree. As well, we will do whatever we can to make this city a place that people like us can afford. We also want to protect one of the most precious natural resources we have, the estuary. If that is a problem for this administration, then yes, I am a problem. A problem that loves this city. And I will say that I have stood at this podium since 2003, but I've never been talked to like this. If you're so sure this will work, show us what makes you so sure. We're not seeing it. And bullies don't apologize.
Thank you. Public comment is still open. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome.
My name is Terri Frank and I live in beautiful Morro Bay. So happy to be here. I own a vacation rental in Cayucos and I started 15 months ago. I know it's a little bit different. I have, my current home right now is also a vacation rental, licensed vacation rental, thanks to you guys. And I think the T-Bid tax, I think it's too much for a vacation rental. I think that should be more in line with San Luis Obispo County, which is 12%. Right now, we're paying 11%, our vacation owners are, vacation rental owners are. I think that from the folks and my guests, I have had such good luck and, and fortune with my vacation rental in Cayucos. And my, my guests tell me where they're coming from or I can see where they're coming from. And most of them are coming from the valley, from Bakersfield and Fresno. And I would say about 80% are, and they already know our area. You know, they want to get the heck out of Dodge, you know, and it's hot and when it's cold. And, and so, and the ones that are coming from San Francisco Bay Area as well as LA, they're familiar with our area as well, not as much obviously as the, as the valley. But would like to propose that it's looked at a little bit more in that vacation renters or rental owners like Mary Ann, myself, I mean, you're talking about $2,100 in commercial insurance alone. You're talking about higher rates for water and sewers. You know, everything's increasing and everything's being passed on, including if it becomes a 3% tax, I would like to see it raised by 1% to 1.5%. And give us a little time to kind of adjust and give the guests some time because they're paying that tax on cleaning fees, if you're passing them down, et cetera. So they also are paying VRBO and Airbnb service fees, et cetera. And so everything just keeps getting more and more and more expensive. And I'd like to see, you know, you guys take a look at that and say, "We already have a destination spot." And I think that there is, you know, 1%, 1.5% go towards, you know, increase it and, and see what kind of business is really brought in here by those advertisements. And I think there, there is good logic to it, but not 3%. So, thank you. Thanks for listening. Welcome.
Public comment is still open for any items that you want to speak to on the agenda for which you can't stay or any other items. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Dawn Fuerberg and I've been a resident here for the past 20 years. I've raised my daughters here, been a Spanish professor at Questa College for 18 years and Cal Poly as well. I own a travel business, Aurora Adventures, and I have traveled most of my life in third-world countries and know the travel industry very well. Recently, I've opened a home-hosted Airbnb to supplement my income as I've left my teaching position and I'm a single mom of two daughters trying to make a mortgage. What I'm asking here today is that you pass the ordinance sooner than later to distinguish between home-hosted and hosted, I mean, non-hosted Airbnbs. Because this has put a huge difficulty on my life to be shut down as an Airbnb. I think there was a lot of lack of education to receive a cease and desist in the manner that it was done, felt very scary. I still, every day, just say it's going to be okay and trust that this will resolve sooner than later. And what I'm asking is that you resolve this issue of home-hosted. I receive, I'm also full every single night and my Airbnb generally attracts travelers from out of the country, generally Germans, French, Swedish. And it's been a beautiful experience, it's been very empowering for myself and it's almost like a study abroad or a program for me in my home. And so I would really just ask that to adopt what maybe Grover Beach is doing, which is just sending out a letter to the home-hosted saying, "Come pay your taxes. We found out you have one. We're starting to collect. We have a new ordinance." Rather than do a cease and desist, because I'm losing over $1,500 a month right now and it is severely impacting me and will impact my holiday season as well for my children. And I don't want to go into any debt. So I would really appreciate this opportunity, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on October 8th at the forum you had. That was lovely and it was so appreciated and I appreciate you receiving public comment tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Public comment is still open for items on the agenda for which you can't stay or any other comments. Hmm? I'm going to do it, yeah. Okay, and so Jan, I see our business spot individual, Dr. Sumanta Paul, come on forward, sir. You're the business spot tonight, I'm just going to include this as the last public comment. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Dr. Heading. I really appreciate this opportunity to present myself to the people here. My name is Sumanta Paul. I'm a pharmacist. I've been practicing pharmacy almost over 10 years or so. So I moved from Bakersfield. My career is mainly with corporate structure. But at this point, I felt if I have my own practice, I could reach to people, you know, use my expertise and my knowledge to our patients, especially in this neighborhood where healthcare is extremely needed. We have an older community here. So I thought, also I am liking the weather, since I'm from Bakersfield, it's very hot over there. So it's an, it's a nice opportunity for me to get this, to relocate in this town. So I'm practicing pharmacy in that Morro Bay dragon gift. I'm here to help the people for any healthcare-related needs. I'll be with the city people and I'll extend my help to any sorts of healthcare need. If the city needs, I'll be always with the city. And thank you again. Thank you.
Good. And so your address and phone number would be good for the audience to...
Sure. I, I, my address is 600 Morro Bay Boulevard. It's Suite B. And the phone number is 805-771-9988.
And folks like to know your hours of operation as well, so that would be great.
We are open 9 to 6 on weekdays and on Saturday, we're open 9 to 2.
Great. Well, welcome to the community. Glad that you're here and thanks for coming out tonight and just sharing with everybody about what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
With that, I see no other public comment unless somebody had a desire last minute to speak. If not, I will close public comment, bring them back to council. Let's see, Chief, I know you're going to do a presentation on PSPS this evening, but could you just very briefly refer to Ms. Bates's issue with regard to that? She asked for a support letter for COA and I just wanted you to outline all the support efforts that we've taken to give input, not only to the PUC, PG&E, but other entities in the county and just briefly outline that for us, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you're correct, we've been working on this for over six months, not just as a city but also as a county fire chiefs association. This is a direct direction from the CPUC, California Public Utility Commission, and PG&E, Southern California Edison, and smaller power companies down in San Diego are using that as a, as a law. The main concern that we have as emergency planners is that decisions are being made without consulting state, regional or local emergency planners to shut power. But when we have, I've been on incident management teams up and down the state, PG&E has been great partners on those incidents where they work together collaboratively with the emergency management team to make a decision which areas we're going to cut to help prevent the further spread of wildland fire. This right now is in the CPUC. They've heard many complaints and many presentations have been given to them. I think it's, any further action that we do take would have to be letters to the CPUC and then possibly even Sacramento to help this. But there's a lot of talk going right now, especially to Governor. He is not very happy with what occurred a few weeks ago up in Northern California. But the results was, though, they had 50 infrastructure hardwares that failed in the wind event where the power was turned off and no fires were started. So PG&E is calling this a success. So as we make the presentation later, I do believe this is going to be around for a while and it's not going to change until PG&E either creates better microgrids so they're not cutting power off to the complete communities, and also improve their infrastructure to take these winds. Part of the reason why they're having this situation is climate change. The Southern California weather is moving north. Butte County, Chico, Town of Paradise, didn't experience Santa Ana wind conditions at 70 miles per hour in the 50s, 60s and 70s when all this infrastructure was placed up there on that mountainside. So there's many factors to this and I'm hoping that the CPUC and also the Governor's office will hopefully make some change in the near future. But I do see this still staying with us because of the success story in Northern California that happened a couple of weeks ago.
Great. And we'll look forward to your presentation later in the evening as well. Thanks for that. Thanks to many of you on the vacation rental issue. I just wanted to let you know that the... the city manager-appointed subcommittee will begin meeting, these are closed meetings, so unfortunately I can't invite you to those, but will begin the process of meeting this Thursday evening. Hopefully, we'll conclude our process fairly quickly, bringing back recommendations directly to the city council after they go through the planning commission first, and so we are trying to move as expeditiously. Thanks to Councilmember Heller and McPherson for your public outreach meeting, appreciate the comments regarding that as well. Regarding everything directed at me, that's part of my job to be criticized for things I say, I accept your criticism, stand by the comments that I've made, and do not retract anything. So thank you for your openness and willingness to participate. I will note that I singled out an organization, never an individual person, never mentioned a name, and so I just want that straight for the record. Thank you. With that, I don't have anything else other than, I think, generalities to respond to. We'll move to consent agenda, and I will open up public comment for Agenda Item A, our consent. Anybody wishing to come forward for any consent agenda items, please do so now. Seeing one, I do see one. Welcome, Dawn.
Okay. I'm in favor of approving A3, which is the Cloisters Landscape Planner updated thing. And I'd also like to put a shout out to Pam Newman, who reached out to Citizens and also the Cloisters homeowners to get input to the original document, which went into this final document, so that was really appreciated. I'm also in favor of redoing the median, which is the first item in the whole master plan. But I would like to hold back some money, I don't want to spend our entire deferred maintenance bank just on the median if, or any of the other things are possible. Our pond is in serious need of dredging. The pond, the water level's been low enough so the reeds are just growing like crazy, and cutting them back is not doing enough. The Rob's group does a gradual cut back every year, but it lasts a couple of weeks where you can see things. And even now, even a week isn't enough, you can't see anything. The pond was originally created to accept the water from the eastern part of North Morro Bay, I guess, and to come down, it's doing its job, so that part is good. Takes the water and before it goes to the ocean. That's fine, but again, it needs to be dredged, and there's money involved. And that is not something that has been priced out, but I want to make sure that in saying I approve A3, that I also say I would like to kind of withhold a little money. That's not what you're approving tonight, whether we spend additional money, but I want to put on record that we'd not spend every penny of the deferred maintenance budget that we have. Anyway, that's my comment. Thank you again for all you do, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dawn, appreciate that. Public comment is still open for consent agenda. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Looking once, looking twice. I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Any items to pull on the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull A3.
A3, okay. Any others? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of A1, A2, A4, A5, A6.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve A1, 2, 3, excuse me, A1, 2, 4, 5, 6 by Councilmember McPherson, second by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Councilmember Davis, A3 to you, sir.
Yes, I would like to echo the question that Ms. Beatty raised about the pond. It's a great plan, very comprehensive, but it does not address the pond, so...
That is correct. The scope that we went out with was to look at the formalized landscape areas. We know there is other areas in the Cloisters park and natural area that will need to be maintained, the pond being one of them, the playground, the pathways. What you'll see in the coming year is us coming back to council with a list of capital projects, we'll look for council-approved to get them into the budget, because while this is a good plan, we're not spending any money until it's appropriated. And we'll give council a suite of projects that they can choose from in approving maintenance and capital projects for the Cloisters, the pond being one of them. The pond is a bit problematic because it is a waterway, so there are regulatory agencies that are involved in that, if we get much beyond trimming of the reeds. And Ms. Beatty is right, trimming them seems to encourage them to grow more. So we'll be working with the Cloisters homeowners group and the remaining public work staff to put that plan together, and you'll see it either as a budget amendment or next budget year.
Okay, thanks. And that was my next question, was where will the money come from? Is there any intent to use any of the Cloisters assessment fees for this plan?
The Cloisters assessments will be the sole funding program for anything within the Assessment District, unless directed otherwise.
Okay, so when you come back with your capital budget, it's going to be, it would not be general fund money, it'll be...
Correct. It'll be Cloisters Assessment District money to pay for those, maintenance of those improvements within the Assessment District.
Okay. And I'd like to ask an unrelated question, if I might. The public restroom down at Coleman Beach has been closed, do we have any idea when that's going to be reopened?
We're working with our staff to assess what potential we can, potentials that we can do to rehab that building. We know that there is, it's an unreinforced masonry building, and there are significant cracks in the walls of that, so we fenced it off for safety purposes. Likely, if we can preserve anything, it will be preserving the first few courses of brick, and then coming up with a wood frame structure on top of that. The restroom needs some help for other purposes, other than the, the unreinforced masonry building, it is not ADA accessible, so any improvements that we did to that would be to improve accessibility also. This is a project that our maintenance team would like to take on themselves, much like they did with the Delmar restroom. We just need to set aside that time to do that work.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Are you then ready to move?
I have a question.
Oh, sure, yeah. Councilmember Heller, sure.
So, Mr. Leibig, so the plan has been done, it is, it is a great plan, I like it very much. Is there any money left for capital projects at all, or are you doing something this year and then asking for more funding in the future?
So there is a accumulation fund in the Cloisters, I just don't have those numbers that, maybe Ms. Calloway can, I'll call a friend and she can help me. After we paid the, the money for the plan, there is a reserve account that will be used to fund those cap, that is beyond what is needed for regular maintenance, that would fund those capital improvements.
And so what's the first on the list of capital improvements that you are planning to do?
In this plan, the, the medians would be the first capital project on the list. We do have the pond that we need to take a look at, and then also the play equipment there that also needs some help.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can dial in quickly if you'd like. We're still doing year-end close, we have our auditors coming next week, and I'll close the book, so give a little latitude with this estimate until that's done, but roughly about $140,000 between the regular operating fund and the accumulation fund for the Cloisters.
Councilmember Davis, your pleasure.
I am ready to move, approval of Item A3.
Second.
Motion to approve A3 by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember McPherson. Any further discussion? Not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great, that brings us to Item B-1. This is a public hearing, as a reminder, the format for public hearings is to receive the report from staff, followed by council questions. I will then open the public hearing, invite public comment, at the end of that, close the public hearing, and then entertain council discussion and a motion at that time. And so with that, Item B1 is introduction of Ordinance 625, repealing and reenacting multiple chapters of Title 14, Buildings and Constructions in the City of Morro Bay Municipal Code, so as to incorporate the 2019 California Building Standards Code as adopted by the State of California, and local modifications thereto, as well as amendment to frontage improvements. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Graham, our Community Development Director. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Mayor Heading. Sorry, I can get to the beginning of the presentation here. Okay, looks like we're good. So yes, so what we have in front of you this evening is the introduction to Ordinance 625, which is the, for adoption of amendments to the city's municipal code to put in place the 2019 building code updates. The updates require repealing and reenacting of Chapters 1401 through 1412, and we've also added in 1444 to pick up some changes we want to make to the frontage improvements requirements that we have in the chapter for, Chapter 14, which is Building and Construction. These, again, will all be amendments to the city's Morro Bay Municipal Code. We're amending all of these sections here, so to the, we're moving from the 2016 code to the 2019 code for the building code, both volumes, residential, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, energy, historical building, fire, existing building, green building, California Administrative Code, 2019 Reference and Standards Code, the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, the 1997 Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, and I mentioned a minute ago, we're also making some revisions to Chapter 14.44, which is where we're going to make some clarifications to when and what triggers frontage improvements, frontage improvements being things like curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. Some of the pertinent facts related to the 2019 Building Code, the California Building and Standards Code will become effective January 1. That doesn't, we don't have to do anything, and that happens, it happens automatically. We only need to go through this process if we want to make it part of our municipal code, which allows some of the enforcement components that are in our municipal code, that we can use them through that process to enforce the building code, if we're interested in that. It also allows us to make local amendments to the building code, oftentimes to address, you know, local constraints that we find in our community. We will be doing that as well, and I'll talk about those in a minute. We're also, so as I, as we started off, I started off, this is where we'll be replacing the 2016 code with the 2019 code. Building codes are adopted every three years or triannually. Over to the local amendments. Again, local amendments are typically necessary to address local, local concerns related to like climate and topography or geologic conditions. Some of our local amendments, this time include, we're going to add a section to the building code that requires setback in height verifications. If you have a planning permit associated with an application that goes through for development, we have a standard condition that requires you to get those verifications, but sometimes you can do an addition to your home and/or a commercial building even, and it doesn't trigger the requirement for a planning permit. And so we don't have that condition built in, and this picks that up because we've gotten some pushback from some of the contractors out there doing work, if they just have a building permit and we're asking for those, those verifications for setbacks in heights and those types of things, so we're formalizing that. I think some of the probably more major changes take effect in relation to when we require fire sprinklers, and certainly if you have questions related to that, I have a friend behind me that can probably answer some of them, but I'll speak to the changes in general.
Which slide were you on?
Nope.
I got thrown off, sorry.
Thought I was hitting the button, sorry. Changed out of the presentation section. So, so some of the changes to the fire sprinkler requirements, they'll be required in all new residential and commercial developments. They'll be required for additions and alterations exceeding 50% of the existing square footage of a structure, or for additions in excess of 500 square feet. They'll be required when a change in occupancy moves it to a more hazardous use as determined by the building official and/or fire chief. Fire sprinklers will be triggered when additions or alterations result in the removal or alteration or replacement of 50% or more of the external walls of a building, or 50% or more of the existing internal structures subject to determination by the fire chief. And they'll be required for additions that exceed 300 square foot for single-family and duplex structures, as well as accessory structures, or additions in excess of 50% of the existing square footage for R3 and U occupancies, which is single-family duplex and accessory structures. Some changes of note in the overall building code update to 2019, most of the changes take place, most of the more significant changes take place in the energy code. The California Energy Commission is projecting that with the update from the 2016 code to the 2019, that energy savings will increase by 53% over the previous code cycle. So that's where most of the changes is taking place, and where the significant changes are taking place. Some of those changes, solar is going to now be required for new residential structures that are under three stories. 2016 code update required the infrastructure for new homes to include infrastructure for solar, but didn't require the panels to be put on. Now we're up in the game, and we're going to require solar panels for new, for new single-family homes. We have more special inspection requirements for things related to fire sprinklers, or some of the structural and mechanical and electrical and plumbing equipment installations that take place. We're having greater requirements for our HVAC units, that's heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, moving the MERV rating from 8 to 13, that's Minimum Efficiency Reporting The home energy rating systems requirements are also being increased, those are HERS testing requirements for kitchen exhaust, blower door tests for continuously running exhaust fans, and for installation of new insulation. Domestic water systems, meaning for your water heaters, like for tankless type systems, portion of that energy use for those will now be required to be taken from solar. There's going to be EV charging station requirements for changes, when changes to parking lots happen, that's either in addition to a parking lot and/or new parking lots, and that's the infrastructure, not necessarily the EV charging stations themselves, but the infrastructure will be required, kind of like the 2016 building code did for houses. You had to put the infrastructure in for those as well, but you didn't have to have the charging stations in them. There's also going to be a shade tree requirement for parking lots when you're doing additions to them as well, or you're building new ones. So kind of dealing with the heat island effect. That is my last slide, so the recommendation to council is to introduce, for first reading by title only, Ordinance 625, repealing and reenacting Chapters 1401 through 1412, and 1444, the Morro Bay Municipal Code, to incorporate the 2019 California Building Standards Code as adopted by the State of California, and the local modifications I just referenced.
Great.
I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any council questions for Mr. Graham? Yes, Councilmember Heller?
Okay, Mr. Graham, so if I'm, I'm in the middle of a project, or I'm getting ready to put a project into the plan check process, and you changed the codes, I mean, how do you make that transition for people who are doing that?
That is an excellent question, Councilmember Heller. So if you're, you know, in the process right now, putting plans together for that new remodel you're doing, you want to submit them before January 1, because that's when these will take effect, and so any plans submitted to the building department after that timeframe will be required to comply with the new codes. So typically... So typically what happens in the Building Department for cities like Morro Bay is we'll get an influx of plans that happen, you know, about a month, starting about a month and a half to two months before the end of the year. So coming up here pretty quick, we should start seeing several applications being submitted that have been, you know, in architects' hands as they've been designing them for the last couple of months, and then realizing we're running out of time, and so we'll get a sort of influx of plans that happen related to that, so.
Okay, and then, how about training your staff to make the transition from one code? Is that, is that a big deal?
Good thing is, we have a small staff. Our building inspector, plans examiner, just returned from Ontario, where he spent most of last week at a seminar workshop on all of the code changes. So it was comprehensive, again, like four day, I think, you know, workshop that he was at, coming up to speed with all of those types of things. We also have ancillary contracts with outside plan check firms that help us out when we're busy, because we only have one person that does plan checks and inspections, and so we can always, you know, reach out to them if we have questions about things as we move forward.
So this change is not mandated by the state or any other agency, is that correct?
No, you're mandated to, so if we didn't do anything today, if I didn't bring this in front of you, we would start using the 2019 code on January one. We're mandated by the State of California.
Oh, there is a mandate from the State of California to do that, okay. What else did I want to ask? Those are all the questions I have, thanks a lot.
Okay, Councilmember McPherson, any questions?
I, I just have one question, and you may have answered this in the presentation, so forgive me if you did, but are all of the changes that you have outlined here ones that are mandated by the change in the state building code, or have you added some additional ones over and above?
So the local amendment pieces are the ones that we added that are over and above, and that was the, the ones I referenced there. We have some standard local amendments that we, that we've had for several years, and we, we're maintaining most of those. The new ones that we're adding are the certification for the setbacks in height, that's new.
And what does that mean exactly?
So, almost all planning applications that go through, you know, review by staff, or either at the staff level or at the Planning Commission level, have a standard condition that requires setback in height certifications for, setback certifications for the foundations, those are done by surveyors, and then height certifications at framing, so we can determine that it meets the height requirement, assuming that the proposed project is proposed right at the maximum height, say 25 feet. If they're well below it, sometimes we don't do the height certification, but we will do the setback certifications, because most of the lots in town are small, most people build to the edge of the envelope, we want to make sure they're staying where they're supposed to be, and that they meet setback requirements.
So you are not changing the requirements themselves, only verification?
It was something that we already do, it's just, it doesn't get picked up if it's just a building permit, and, and so that's what we're trying to solidify here. Our building inspector kind of runs into some pushback sometimes when it's related to just a building permit, so we want to make it clear, put it in the code and say, here's the code section, you have to do these. Otherwise, it's done for every other application that runs through the city.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question, and I think you stated it, but just want to reaffirm that, this is a state mandate that will be implemented whether we codify it or not, but the advantage to codifying it locally is that it allows for enforcement and for us to make local amendments, is that correct?
Yeah, that allows for better enforcement. The building code itself has enforcement provisions in it, but so does the city's municipal code, and so it allows us to use those processes as well. It just allows flexibility, and again, we want, we have local amendments that we do want to make, and so it facilitates that process as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could just, on that note, simply put, cities that don't do this have to default to the state code, but they can't do local amendments, so bringing this forth, you know, allows the city to make changes for, you know, the local setting. But if we didn't do this, then we'd have to just follow the state codes blanket.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Councilmember Davis, any questions? Councilmember Addis?
My only one, I asked by email, so thank you. I just was interested in how this would affect affordable and workforce housing, since we've talked about that a lot, and I heard, I received your response that mostly fire sprinklers for ADUs, and outside of that, not a lot of effect on, on affordable and workforce housing, really.
No.
So, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. With that, I'll open up the public hearing and invite any members of the public wishing to come forward and testify regarding item B dash one. Now is your opportunity. Anybody wanting to comment on that? Looking around, seeing none, I will close public comment, I will close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to council and entertain a motion. Discussion is included in that, just entertaining a motion.
I move to introduce for first reading by title only, and with further reading waived, ordinance number six two five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, repealing, amending, and reenacting chapters fourteen point zero one, fourteen point twelve, and fourteen point four four of Title 14 Buildings and Construction of the Morro Bay Municipal Code, thereby adopting by reference and amending the 2019 California Building, Volumes One and Two, Residential, Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, Energy, Historical Building, Fire, Existing Building, Green Building, Administrative and Reference Standards Codes, the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, the 1997 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, and Amending Regulation of Frontage Improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Councilmember Davis has moved the staff recommendation, second by Councilmember McPherson, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, I support this, but I must say, I'm, I'm concerned that the state is mandating things which, in an affordability crisis, in some way or another, is going to increase the cost of housing, whether it's workforce housing or single-family dwellings. I think we all can say, yeah, we want solar panels, we want EV plug-in stations, but every time a code is updated, there's cost added to the cost of construction, and it's kind of a silent cost, and people don't talk about it, they talk about land, they talk about the cost of construction. But this code, which we're basically mandated to implement from Sacramento, is going to increase the cost of construction.
Appreciate those comments, I, I do concur with that. Any other discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you, that moves us to agenda item B dash two. This also is a public hearing. As a reminder, I will entertain the presentation by staff, allow council questions, after that, open the public hearing, ask for public comment, close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion, and entertain a motion at that time. And so with that, this is a public hearing for, and adoption of two resolutions, one that, excuse me, to rescind one resolution and adopt a second regarding our master fee schedule. We've had a number of presentations and discussions regarding this, and I will turn it over to Ms. Callaway for her presentation, thank you.
Thank you, and, and you'll notice that there is no PowerPoint presentation attached. We've had many conversations on this, so didn't think it was necessary. If you recall, at our September update, there was direction to phase in the fee increases based on a dollar amount increase and percentage overall, but that was left a little bit vague. So the attachments that are provided, there's one final version and one in red line version. I want to clarify that you're only adopting the first column, and that's the proposed fee to go into effect January one. We included the other two columns, so you could get a sense of how we're interpreting your, your recommendation to phase them in. When we come back in March or April, you would adopt something close to likely the seven one twenty column. Those would go up by CPI or ENR, because that's what we typically do every year, and then if there's any changes in our processes that may reduce the fees or something like that, we'll analyze those when we bring those back. So the numbers could change slightly, but we want a council to kind of get an idea of where we were going, and also for the community to have some awareness as well, and be prepared for that when it happens six months later. So that's why this looks a little bit different. Also, since the staff report was published, we've gone through and have a few, some minor changes, some substantial changes. I've provided you with just pages with some red outlines in blue of what we're proposing. I'll go through those for members of the public that are interested, there's copies on the back shelf. The first is on page one forty-five, that was a typo, the business license renewal fee should be fifteen dollars and not twenty-five, so we would correct, correct that. On page one forty-seven, you, I think the chamber submitted some correspondence later this afternoon, had some discussions with staff as well, and the two fees for the valuation, the permitting fees from three thousand and one to three hundred thousand and three hundred and thousand and up, we recommend pulling those from this tonight, leaving them as they currently are. We'll defer them, work with the chamber, and work with our consultant, who by the way is here in the audience, if you do have questions on any of the fees proposed, work with them. The issue that the chamber raised is when we get into large scale valuations, say of a million-ish or so, and Mr. Graham can speak more specifically if you have questions, it gets quite expensive, and that wasn't the intent of this, so we want to work in some additional phasing. So we would bring that back in likely early December, as we have limited council meetings in November, and have that discussion with the Liver Board. So we are recommending pulling that from now. On page one fifty-seven, I missed rounding up some of these to the nearest dollar, so we're eliminating the cents to just, for simplicity purposes. On page one eighty-six, there's a couple duplicative public special events fees in here, so we're going to remove the one on page one eighty-nine, and then on one eighty-six, just clarify for that's all publics to base rentals, instead of having it under the vets' hall or teen center, it is a little bit confusing, so we would recommend just eliminating it and clarifying that it's for all. With that being said, that's all I was going to address in the fee schedule. The second part of this is some direction on our partnership policy, but maybe we should have any questions on the, on the proposed fee schedule first?
Yes, and thanks for the noticed changes, appreciate that, and I'll open up for council questions on the fee schedule. Councilmember Heller?
Yes, so I just wanted to confirm, we had a couple of emails go back and forth, I just wanted to confirm a few rough numbers, and I know the work done by RCS, which we appreciate very much, seemed to indicate we could generate a million dollars in, in revenue if we implemented all the recommendations all at once. In, in emailing back and forth with you, it sounds like the January one, if we implement those, probably generated a quarter of a million dollars, something in that range between two and two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what we're estimating.
I estimate, I know, I understand. And then the January first gets us up to five hundred thousand or so, and then the following year, the following January first gets us up to that million dollar mark, is that, did I understand you correctly?
Yes, because as the recommendations are right now, with the exception of the appeal hearing fee, which by, I think unanimously, everybody supported not increasing that to the extent of 25 percent, the recommendations, if activity stayed as it were today, would generate about a million dollars.
Okay, and then the whole harbor piece is still out there, and we're not going to get that until January, I think, is that the plan, or are we getting it sooner than that?
That would likely come back early December. We're going to engage in those conversations as early as next week with some of the Liver Board, concerned people, and then in early November-ish for the dock fees. So all of that coupled with impact fees, we're going to try to bring back in December, so we can get those implemented as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Davis? Okay.
Jennifer, I just want to understand the, the fees for the three thousand to three hundred thousand, and then three hundred thousand and up. We're proposing tonight to maintain the fees as they are effective January first.
We're proposing to not make any changes to those fees at this point. We will come back, so they would stay at the previous levels, which was point oh two five percent times evaluation. Then when we have our next conversation in early December, we'll have worked out a different tier structure that would be more fair to the higher-end valuation projects, and Mr. Graham can correct that if I'm mis-
Yeah, that was, that was perfect. Really, what happens is when you get something that's a large valuation, say a new hotel, and say the valuation that came in at building was in the five million dollar range. The permit costs that go along with that are not commensurate with amount of work that's done on the staff side of things, which is something we shouldn't be doing. When we vetted the fees, we looked at the fees related to permits that we have, single-family house. Tenant improvements, our tenant improvements for a commercial space, one point two five million, our fees are pretty good through that range. When you start getting into the four and five, you know, million, three, four, five millions, it, we have a problem, so we want to tier it and flatten it, so it stops going like that. And so that's what we're going to work on. We have, there's several options to bring back to you, it should be fairly simple for us to fix it.
Very cool, thank you. Councilmember McPherson, sorry, I missed you.
That's all right, thank you. And I had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Callaway this morning and go through a lot of my questions, so I'm not going to ask all of them at this point, but I have a, just a couple that I think I didn't get an answer to, so the first one is, and, and I don't think I asked this one, so of course I didn't get an answer. On this page that we're looking at in Building Division, the IT service fee, which went from a point zero zero seven five valuation to a six percent surcharge, can you explain what a six percent church, surcharge is, and what is it a surcharge on? Because that seems like a high percent. And what is the fee, anyway? What does it cover?
So, IT service fee covers our GIS services, it covers city works, which is our project tracking, work order and asset management systems, so IT stuff for the, the Building Division, Community Development Department, Public Works covers the fee for that.
And, and it's six percent of what?
It's, I don't have the fee in front of me, now I have to look at-
What page again?
You were looking at this new handout that has the-
What page number do you have on the bottom?
Two can probably assist with that.
Page five on the handout.
On the, on the current handout, the change, and I was reading what it used to be, which was point zero zero seven five times the valuation, and it was changed to a six percent surcharge, and I'm just wondering what that's based on, or what is it on?
Yeah, so it's zero point seven five of the project valuation, which is what we've talked about for the permit, permitting, plan checks, project valuation, and we're converting it over to the permit, the building permit, so it's, the building permit will be two and a half percent of the valuation, so it's six percent of the building permit, and we're doing that to be consistent with other surcharges on there, such as a general plan surcharge as well.
So it's a surcharge on the fee?
On the permit, yes.
On the fee?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify what it was, thank you. And then, I had asked about the ABC permit, which I know that, in my experience, organizations actually pay that, that's the liquor permit, and I noted, and it's usually twenty-five dollars, and now we have a seventy-five dollar fee that the city is going to add on top of that, I'm just curious to know what that's for.
What page?
Let the chief kind of add on here, but the chief does review all of the ABC permits that come through, so it's for their department's time in doing that. I know when we spoke this morning, you mentioned that you, you were able to just go right to ABC. Should it not be generally processed through the city's department, then a seventy-five dollar permit fee wouldn't happen, but in general, our police department does review all of them.
Okay, thank you. And so, since what you're asking us to do is to approve the new fee structure, not counting the ones that we're eliminating for, for later consideration, but also repealing the existing ones, so I just want to know, you suggested that we would retain the fees that are currently in place, is that correct?
For the two building permit fees, is that-
Well, and the Liver Boards, and all of the ones that were kind of, and development impact, all the ones that were postponing till a later date.
So in the attachment to the resolution, the items such as development impact, you'll see there no change, they're consistent with what they are as of today, so rescinding that resolution doesn't impact those. I would suggest in the motion, you clarify that it is with the suggested changes that we've outlined today, and then we can go back and, and put the impact fee, or the planning fees back to what they are today, so that wouldn't change as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we, thank you, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Davis? Did I go, did I go to you yet? I'm sorry, I don't know, I, I guess I came back to her, oh, Councilmember Addis, I just wanted to hear you speak again, that's all.
I, maybe I just clarified this. So the chamber gave, submitted the letter with the, you know, five million dollar hypothetical, and it looked like our fees are five times as much to do a hypothetical five million dollar project. Did you just say- Did you just say you're looking at flattening those so that we wouldn't be so out of line on that size project? Or am I talking about something?
No, that's essentially, that's essentially correct, yes.
Okay. So that issue, you're looking at fixing that issue, basically?
Correct, yeah. We'll probably figure out what, we'll probably add at least one more tier. We might add more, but I mean, at this point, you know, off the top of my head, looking at it today, I was thinking, we probably can, excuse me, at least add another tier where we, you know, it goes up to a million dollars, and then that's when we start flattening it off. And there's different ways to do that based on how you want to calculate the valuation moving above a million dollars.
And then that will come back to us-
Yes.
-around the next round of looking at these fees?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Great. Okay, no other questions? I'm good. I've asked my questions previously, got them answered. Thank you for that. With that, I will open up the public hearing and open up public comment. I do have two speaker slips. First up is Patricia Newton. Patricia, welcome.
Mayor Heading, City Council, city staff members, thank you. I am Patricia Newton. I'm the president of Morro Bay Art Association. I'm here in behalf of many of our 300 members and artists in the community at large. We understand that there is a need to balance the city budget and pay for services such as fire, police, et cetera. I under, also, our art in the park is a unique situation where we don't partner with the city of Morro Bay, and we're going on our 65th year. But we hope that you'll take into consideration when our permit fees were suggested to go from $3,300 annually to $9,700 annually, how much we do as an organization in our contributions to the city of Morro Bay and its citizens. So while you discuss and make decisions with regard to the permit fees, we hope you'll consider not only to adjust, but also to make an increase that is just fair, fair for us and fair for everybody else concerned. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And next up is Erica Crawford from the chamber. Erica, welcome.
Hello, thanks. Hello again. I hate doing this, but if I can, we got a letter out to you fairly late, so feel just to form me the opportunity to read it into the record so that everybody can hear it. That'd be great. So the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce completed a comprehensive review of the cost allocation study and submitted 10 recommendations for implementation of the cost and fee adjustments being considered by council tonight. These recommendations were presented for your consideration at the city's October 8 council meeting. The chamber does affirm those recommendations and feel as though that work speaks for itself. More recently, and what we've discussed so far tonight, the chamber evaluated the probable permitting costs of a hypothetical commercial development project that fit the definition of a catalyst or opportunity site project as described under the EDSP. As you'll recall, we're partnered on that. This project was valued at $5 million of construction value. We did a side-by-side comparison of the project under your current and proposed fee programs with that of neighboring cities and unincorporated areas in the county to assess how our permit processing costs stack up on this identical and theoretical project. And that's up on the overhead. As you'll see, Morro Bay is five times more expensive than the regional average for building, plan, check and inspection, and we hear that that's going to be corrected. That five times before, that's before any of the fee increases. So we can certainly agree that the city's current and proposed fee structure does and will discourage the kinds of projects that the EDSP says that we want and that we need in our community. I'm thinking of Market Street Plaza, the hotel project over by the high school, Bank of America Opportunity Site. There are multiple opportunity sites identified in that plan. The chamber has expressed support of increasing some fees to the regional average. We recognize and support the council's goal to achieve fiscal and economic sustainability, and we do understand that bringing fees for service up to full or near full cost recovery works toward that goal. Our hypothetical exercise uncovered, though, that there are some unresolved issues in the consultant's work on cost allocation that require attention. We therefore recommend that the city council defer any consideration of the final community development fees until an equitable and accurate fee program can be developed that will recover documented cost and be regionally competitive. We believe staff concurs with that recommendation, and we heard it tonight, maybe not for the whole set of community development fees. But we at the chamber are committed to work with the city on this matter so it can be brought back to you at the earliest possible time. Thanks. 35 seconds left.
Hey, thanks Erica. Appreciate that. Public comment is still open for item B2. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Seeing none, I will close public comment, close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. We're looking at two different issues. One is a motion regarding what has, was stated in the staff report with suggested staff changes or other considerations you may want to consider. And then the second after that will ask for input regarding policy for facility and event fee subsidies. So if we could just start with the first with regard to the public hearing and the item before you with regard to Resolution 31-19. Any discussion on that? Or I'll also entertain a motion if you're ready to go there, and we'll have discussion after that.
Well, I'm ready to move.
Okay.
I moved that the council adopt Resolution Number 88-19 as amended tonight by staff, which updates the city master fee schedule for fiscal year 2019 and '20.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Davis to adopt the resolution as stated with suggested staff changes. Second by Councilmember McPherson, and discussion.
Well, I'll start.
Okay.
I'm very pleased that the staff is willing to be, adjust this based on input that they've received, and they've, they've listened, they've listened to the chamber, and I appreciate their willingness to delay some of these and reconsider them. And when they do so, I do hope they work with the chamber. I have had concerns about the development and building fees from the very beginning because we seem to be out of line with other cities in the county. And I hope that when we do that, we keep in mind that we do need to be competitive if we want to keep up our economic development and entice people to want to come and build in our city. And I also think it's important to keep in mind that some of these fees have negative consequences. And that's why I, when we discuss subsidies, I want to be very clear that I think we need to help organizations on their fees that contribute to the community and bring tourists into town and provide something for people to do. So that's really why I'm supporting this current resolution, and hopefully we'll address the rest of them very soon. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Sure, absolutely. Further discussion?
Yes, I want to thank Erica and the chamber staff, the board, chamber staff and board for really digging into this and finding this little bit of a contretemps and, and bringing it to us. And I appreciate the time that Scott and Jennifer spent past two days figuring it out and making the adjustment.
Thank you for that. Any other comments?
I would just like to concur with both of my colleagues. I appreciate the Government Affairs Committee for digging into this, the chamber board, the efforts of the chamber and the efforts of staff to get this right. I think it would be an easy one to just sort of gloss over, and so I appreciate you digging in and, you know, taking the time. And I'm glad it's going to come back to us and all the various pieces that we can get it right this first time around.
Thank you. With that, I'll add my thanks, echo what has been said affectionately known as the GAC, Government Affairs Committee. We appreciate the evaluation. Thank you. I think we all received a copy of the extensive work that was done and the benchmarking across the board. I also want to just thank staff for responding to that prior to the meeting, coming up with what I think is a reasonable and valid solution to pull this portion out of the ordinance, take a look at these issues in detail, and then bring it back to council as well. So thank you, staff, for recognizing that and being willing to work with not only the chamber, but us in relooking at those issues. With that, Councilmember Heller, any discussion? Okay. With that, we have a motion by Councilmember Davis again to approve the staff report with suggested changes, which are outlined here. And a second by Councilmember McPherson. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Good, thank you for that. That ends item B-1, except that, the formal motion that is, there is a request for direction regarding policy for facility and event fee subsidies. And so if you want to comment on that, I think you began to comment on that. Councilmember McPherson, maybe I'll start with you and see if you have comments you'd like to add.
I, yes, I do. I-
By the way, I just want to say this is not a motion, this is just direction.
Right. No, I understand.
Thanks.
I had actually asked to have agendized a discussion of the partnership policy over a year ago, and I am concerned that we have not addressed that. And I would prefer to do that in conjunction with the subsidies. My concern is that until we really adequately understand what we're trying to accomplish with the partnership policy, it's going to be difficult to assess who deserves a subsidy and who doesn't. And my concerns about the current policy, I know it was enacted by a previous council and at the direction of a previous city manager, but it was done by the Recreation Department. And my concern now is that we have a lot of organizations that may indeed be eligible, but the criteria are oriented toward the Recreation Department. And it would make it difficult for some of these other organizations that we talk about, even providing a subsidy like the community dinner or how they would qualify. It's not even clear to me how the radio station, which does have a partnership policy now, qualifies under this. So I would prefer that we have a clear policy as to what it means to be a partner with the city. And it would include, it's broader, includes any and all organizations that provide a benefit to the community, whether it's to tourism or, you know, having, giving people something to do or, or helping disadvantaged people in our community, and then decide how to assess subsidies. I think it's fine to have a for-profit rate and a nonprofit rate, but it's that last category of who gets a subsidy and how much that I think we still need to first understand what the partnership is, and then maybe there's another category left over. So that's, those are my comments.
Great, well stated. Thank you. Councilmember Heller, yes?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember McPherson's comments about the partnership. I think that's an important policy to put in place. I think we need to remember the context that we're in, which is our structural deficit that is so significant. I think we need to look very closely at any subsidy that we give for any event or any facility, frankly. And I think there's a huge gap there and that can be made up to, so that we have reasonable fees, so that events can continue and so forth. But I kind of feel like we're giving away the store, to be frank, for a lot of these events and subsidies. And I think considering the context of our structural deficit, we need to look at that very closely.
Thank you, well stated. And Councilmember Davis, any comments?
I agree.
Okay, Councilmember Addis?
I absolutely agree with my colleague, Councilmember McPherson. And I struggle with calling many of these a subsidy, and I heard the mayor liken this to a metaphor with the grocery store and giving away things. And I don't really feel like that. I feel like many of the, much of the time when we adjust fees, it's because it's a benefit to the city and it's because it's a benefit to residents. And I don't think that's necessarily, I'm not sure subsidy is the right term. I don't want to bicker over which term to use, but from a philosophical perspective, I do struggle with calling these things subsidies or acting like we're giving something to somebody who we're not sure if they deserve it. I have a completely different perspective on that, that when we lower fees, it's to the benefit of the community in general, and that we want to be really clear about when we're going to lower fees and when we're going to keep fees at a higher rate and why we're doing that. But to me, it's not a giveaway, and it's not giving something to somebody who, you know, is trying to get something from me or from the city. And so as I approach it, it's with that thinking about what's going to benefit Morro Bay, what's going to align with us. And I really appreciate that it's called a partnership agreement, it's not called a subsidy agreement. And I think we need to just be very careful with our thinking and the way that we approach this. And I understand, you know, there's a structural deficit, which makes it all the more important to me that we recognize our partnerships as valuable.
Thank you. I'll echo Councilmember McPherson's comments and also Councilmember Addis's comment, comments, I should say. The bottom line is, we're asking staff to bring back the partnership policy as the all-inclusive document to incorporate the issues that have been raised with regard to the former term subsidy, which I won't use, but potential reduced cost to organizations that provide services, as you've outlined in the staff report, that have significant return on investment to the city. And that's really, I think, what Councilmember Addis was capturing, that there are many such events that do that. So is that clear enough direction, or do you need further direction?
Just so I can accurately relate to my boss who will return tomorrow, let me try to reiterate that. So instead of a facility and event fee subsidy policy, you're really looking for us to come back and rescind the current partnership policy and clarify in one document what that means, what qualifies, and how reduced rental fees would be included in that for any kind of program.
Yeah. One uniform document is what I'm hearing across the board, right? You're seeing the head shake.
Yes, I'm seeing everybody shake their head yes. Okay, I think I can communicate that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all for your input. Very, very good input. Again, thanks to the chamber for your great work as usual. And with that, we will move on to business items. Item C-1, are we okay to move forward? Or, everybody okay? Biofluids, okay? Great. We will move to item C-1. This is the quarterly WRF capital project update, and this is a receive file, but also provide any comments as necessary. And I will turn it over to Mr. Kassaris, our program director, manager, I should say, for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I think we have a little problem with the presentation. The one labeled item C1.
Is that the plant?
It's a little ominous.
Oh, sorry. Scared me.
Well.
Yeah, it's doing well. Time to replace it, I guess, huh?
Is this not it? What are we looking for?
Great, thank, thank you very much. Thank you for having me here tonight to discuss item C1, which is the review of the water reclamation facility project, capital project quarterly update report. Again, we're asking to receive the September 2019 monthly status report, i.e. the Q1 1920 quarterly status report for the water reclamation facility and provide any feedback as deemed appropriate. I just, I want to continue to do this every quarter when we bring a formal presentation back to council, but we have a series of monthly reports that we develop. Those monthly reports go on the council agenda as a consent item. During those monthly reports, the second and third months of every quarter, we're really just tracking actual expenditures on the, on the project. Every third month, our monthly report grows in size and becomes our quarterly report, which we bring to CFAC and we present to CFAC- to CFAC, which we did last week on Tuesday. And we also bring that to city council every quarter. At the end of every quarter, we do a budget reconciliation. We look at any potential changes to the budget and forecast those into the next quarter. And then, on an annual basis, we look at both the budget and the schedule, and we use that annual budget and schedule as our benchmark for the upcoming year. So, summary of the project's status. So, in general, the project is on budget, and I want to direct your attention to some of the information that we're going to go through now. The new budget is in line with the original $126 million budget. That was the basis of the 2018 rate study. That is, the current budget is approximately $125.1 million. That's where we're currently tracking. Several major elements of the projects are behind schedule. The, one of the items that was noted last week at CFAC was, we had been noting in the monthly reports for the last several months that we were in danger of missing the construction notice to proceed deadline that we have for the WRF. So, unfortunately, we received some information on October 10th, the afternoon of October 10th, from the folks at the EPA, that one of the environmental agencies that we are currently consulting with did not agree with EPA's initial finding, and has requested some additional information. This process that we're going through, this consultation process, is one that's necessitated by the federal dollars that we're going to be receiving from the project through the WFIAP program, and then also through the state revolving fund program. This process requires an over and above consultation with a number of different federal environmental agencies. That process needs to be completed before any construction can start. And if we start construction before that process is completed, then we can severely put the federal dollars that we could get for the project risk. We had started consultation with the specific, through the EPA, with the specific agency back in June or July of this year, and everything was tracking along great. We thought we were going to receive their formal finding, and they did not agree with EPA's formal finding. And so, for that reason, we will not be issuing the construction notice to proceed to the contractor this week. As we've noted here before, the failure to provide that notice to proceed within 12 months after initiating the agreement will result in some schedule and impacts to the guaranteed maximum price for the design builder's contract. One of the things that was noted last week at the CFAC meeting was that, you know, this was not something that was identified in the quarterly report, and it was not something that was discussed at the CFAC meeting, kind of in generality. Really, it has to do with the timing. The report was finalized on Thursday. We received notification from EPA on Thursday afternoon. We've been going through a lot of conversations with EPA this week, or the last week, to get our head around this particular issue. So, I know the question out there is, what are the schedule and budgetary impacts? We provided some additional information through the EPA to this environmental agency today. They have, we expect a response from them within 30 days. That response will say that either they concur based on the new information we've provided, or we need to go into a formal consultation process. That formal consultation process could take an additional three to four months to complete. So, this is a, this is a big deal for the project, and as I mentioned, something that we just learned about and surprised us last Thursday, or a week from Thursday. I do want to talk about the project as being on schedule. Again, being very particular when I say "on schedule," meaning that under our current schedule that we show in the quarterly report, we will be meeting our TSO compliance deadline about 485 days ahead of the requirement that the regional board has placed on the city of February 28, 2023. So, we will be extending our construction window, pushing out our construction start for the WRF, which will have an impact on that 485-day float. But again, that's something that we will be dealing with here, and we're actively working with the EPA now. So, that substantial completion date of December 29, 2021 will shift out based on the durations that I mentioned, one month being likely the best-case scenario with something more like four or five months as the worst-case scenario. We'll be bringing information back to council when we get that formal notification from this agency through the EPA. In terms of the budget history, this is something that appears in all the quarterly reports. Over here to the left, we have the baseline budget that was developed, $126 million. That was the basis of the rate study. And then, the quarterly reconciliation that was done in Q3 of last fiscal year, our annual baseline budget that was developed at the end of last fiscal year, beginning of this fiscal year. And then, we have our quarterly reconciled budget for Q1, which is $125.1 million. Now, why has the baseline budget gone down a little bit from the beginning of the fiscal year? I think the real, the real item to point to here is on the conveyance facilities. The designer for the conveyance facilities delivered their 60% design set of drawings, and along with that came an updated cost estimate. And based on that cost estimate, we've reduced the engineer's estimate for that component of the project. The recycle water facilities, there's minimal changes there in terms of the general project costs. There's also a general, minimal changes there from the beginning of the fiscal year through the first quarter of this fiscal year. In terms of some of the key accomplishments and challenges, we have been working very closely with the EPA and SRF to get through the SHPO process and expect to be sending the final programmatic agreement to SHPO tomorrow for their signature. That was something that we need to get completed before we can start construction. We've also been working on the special conditions that are required by the coastal development permit in OI that the city received back in July. We have delivered drafts of three of those four conditions to the coastal, excuse me, to the Coastal Commission. Again, the challenge here is the issuance of the notice to proceed, and as we sit here tonight, we will not be issuing that notice to proceed this week. As we've noted previously, the conveyance facilities have had some schedule challenges, mainly related to advancement of the design because of some of the property access issues that we've had with the Vista and PG&E property. And again, as I, as I've mentioned in the last several months, we've gotten over those issues. We've done all the necessary work we need to expedite the design. The challenge is expediting that design and figuring out a way to fast-track that and get that project, that component of the project back on schedule. The same is true for the recycle water facilities, which have been tied up with property access as well as the coastal development permit. This is an overview of the project dashboard, and then this, again, this is as of the end of September, last month, prior to the receipt of some of the information that I just recently went over. And it wanted to indicate that in terms of project budget and other elements, we are, we are in the green. In terms of the program manager earned value, we're just off that earned value of one there, and so that's yellow. And then, in terms of our scheduled performance, because we're behind schedule on a couple of aspects of the project around permitting and some other things, that is also yellow. That scheduled performance index is currently sitting at .9. This is a plot of our current versus planned cash flow for the project through the duration of the project. As you'll see, there's a tail out there. The red was where we had anticipated being at the beginning of this fiscal year. Now, three months later, with some of the continued delays with being able to do the work that we need to do, the hydro geo work in order to push that portion of the project forward, we've got, we're showing a delay in terms of the completion of the wells, the injection wells for the project. Again, you'll notice that the diamond there, the red diamond, represents that where we plan to be in terms of our TSO compliance at the beginning of the fiscal year. The blue diamond was where we were planning to be at the end of Q1 of this fiscal year. So, as I mentioned, the delays that we're talking about would shift that blue dot out, and that would, that would be shown in future monthly and quarterly reports, and as we, as we know more from the EPA. In terms of expenditures to date, the current expenditures to date against the open consultant contracts or total consultant contracts for the project is about $11.6 million. The total, the total expenditure is going back to the beginning of the project in 2013 is just over $13 million, roughly 10% of the overall current budget of $125.1 million that's been expended to date. This is an overview of the various elements of the schedule. The important thing to note here is, and you can see the progress of several of these items as it pertains to the planned progress. The takeaway here is, at the bottom, it's hard to see, but it's represented in the dashboard, the overall project budget from the start of the project from, of September, or, excuse me, 2013, is about 62%. And the current scheduled performance index, which is, again, a measure of where we are performing to our baseline schedule, is .9. So, we are behind schedule when you aggregate all these different tasks together. One of the items that was, has been discussed is the addition of a milestone schedule. A number of individuals from CFAC had asked for a milestone schedule and an easier way to track, a more comprehensive milestone schedule than what's currently provided in the quarterly report, which ties back to the time schedule order that was issued by the regional board. So, this, this milestone schedule is another way to assess the scheduled performance for the project and shows our currently, our current baseline schedule that was baselined at the beginning of this fiscal year, and where we currently are with our planned completion dates for major milestones. The most important milestone being essentially substantial completion of the water reclamation facility itself in compliance with that time schedule order. There's a number of other milestones that have been identified for bidding and construction, completion of construction for the various elements of the project as In terms of schedule recovery strategies, again, we've talked about the hydrogeologic challenges that we've had. We've got GSI under contract. We've been moving forward with the work that we've been able to do on the east side of Highway 1. We really need to get on the west side of Highway 1 in order to move that forward, and that work has been tied to the actual receipt of the coastal development permit, which we are anticipating getting very soon, once we can get over this environmental hurdle that I, that I mentioned earlier. In terms of general permitting, one of the tasks that's associated with the general permit is the completion of the permit application for Morro Creek, the streambed alteration permit, as well as a Caltrans encroachment permit. Now that we have the 60% design deliverable for the conveyance facilities, we're going to be putting together those applications and getting those to Fish and Wildlife and Caltrans. In terms of potable reuse permitting, we are continuing to develop the enhanced source control plan, which we've talked about a little bit. And as I mentioned previously, the hydrogeological challenges also impact Task 6, which is our potable reuse permitting effort, because the hydrogeological work is very important to being able to complete that permitting effort or move that permitting effort forward. In terms of funding, we are working to expedite the signing of the Clean Water SRF loan agreement. We are very close to having a signed WFIAP loan agreement. We have a final review with WFIAP staff tomorrow. And also, in terms of the WRF improvements, as I mentioned, we need to expedite the environmental sign-offs by WFIAP and the SRF, meaning this effort that we're going through currently, we're doing everything we can to be timely with the information we provide to the EPA and move that project forward as quickly as we can. As EPA is the lead agency, we can support them, but they have direct contact with the environmental agencies. Again, the recommendation is to receive the September 2019 monthly status report, i.e. the Q1 quarterly report for the water reclamation facility project. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kassaris. I appreciate that. I think I'll start off with questions for you, sir. Am I correct in what I've heard, I just want to feed it back, but it's really a question. Am I correct in making the assumption that the issue with regard to not being able to issue the notice to proceed really is due to the fact that the WFIAP loan program, which is administered by the EPA or the Environmental Protection Agency, which is the lead agency, creates a new layer of review and oversight by the federal government? And even at this late stage, although we have complied with all requests for information, that upper level of review has resulted in a question with regard to specifically what you mentioned as the potential for questions surrounding just the environmental issues? And could you just expand on that a little bit?
Sure.
So, that we're all clear?
Yeah. So, as you mentioned, the environmental process, if the city were to be selling bonds for the project or financing the project with non-federal funds, that really would have stopped at the, at the completion of the final EIR, and these additional consultations would not be required. And so, as I mentioned, this particular agency that we're dealing with, we started that consultation back in, in early July. Essentially, we provided a bunch of information that was, that we had developed as part of the EIR. We'd actually done some supplemental work to augment that based on some input from EPA, sent that information over, and there was some back and forth with that agency. We provided some additional information. And we thought that, as I mentioned, everything, these federal agencies are not always the most, we don't necessarily receiving, not receiving a response isn't an indication of an issue. That's pretty common, and it just so happens that at the very last minute, they came back and said, you know, we agree with several of the EPA's findings, but there's one particular finding that we do not agree with. And so, that's where we find ourselves right now.
And because of that added layer and the requirement for that, the basic bottom line is, we've responded and provided information for mitigation. They either accept that, and that's possibly a, maybe a month-long process to make that happen, or if it's not acceptable, it could be prolonged up to possibly four months, correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct. So, immediately upon receipt of the letter from the EPA, we put together our responses. There were some specific questions that were asked in that letter of the EPA. So, we developed those responses on behalf of the EPA, got that information to them end of last week, and got notification this afternoon that they had taken our information, put it into their own, in their own formal letter back to this agency, and they sent it off. And so, that begins the clock ticking. And you're correct, the, we should get a response in 30 days that says, we're done, we don't need any additional information, or we need to engage in a formal consultation. And that's where there's a couple of different things there around a 90, a 90-day time, and then the ability for that agency to extend it another 30 days if necessary to do that. So, and those aren't absolutes. These things can, can take on a life of their own, and, but that's, that's what we're trying to manage, manage it to. Obviously, we have every hope that we're going to be able to get a quick answer from Fish and Wildlife. We've actually, excuse me, we've actually asked for a meeting and a phone call to discuss some of those issues, so.
So, the biggest issue is that that impacts at least outcome for right now, or concern is that that potentially, or will impact the guaranteed maximum price because we're not able to move forward on the 24th or whatever date we're supposed to move forward?
Yeah.
And do you know the impact of that?
We don't know the impact at that time. The contract is silent in terms of the magnitude of the impact. What the contract does do is it, it sets forth the mechanism by which the design-build team can come back to the city and say, we have a changing condition, and that changing condition is either an excessive amount of construction escalation that's happened, or we've, or a year, whichever one of those happens first before issuing that construction notice to proceed. So, that is, that's where we find ourselves now. We won't be making that year deadline.
In your estimation, and I know you don't know the magnitude of what that issue might be right now, but do you sense that we have adequate contingency built into this project to be able to absorb potentially what the change in guaranteed maximum price, if there is one, may well be?
Yeah. So, I do want to point out, and again, this project hasn't started construction, and we're already talking about expenditure of contingency, but I do want to, want to remind everyone that it is a design-build project, and the reason for these design-build projects are, quality of these design-build projects is we identify these things before we get into construction, and we're likely going to be using the majority of our contingency before we get into construction. Based on our total contingency that we've identified for this portion of the project, the change orders that have been approved to date, we are working, our goal is, and we've started the dialogue already with the design-build team, we've been talking to them about this since essentially the day we got the notification from that environmental agency, and we are working to come up with And we are working to come up with a solution that stays within the contingency amount that we have for the project.
Great, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Councilmember Addis, Councilmember Davis?
I have that same question, just to get a little more clarification on that piece. Can you say again which agency? I know you referenced the agency you're working with. Do you mind saying that one more time?
Yes, we are working with U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, no questions? Councilmember McPherson? Or, I don't know, I wasn't looking for hands, I'm just kind of, whoever wants to start first.
Yeah, I really, most of the questions were already asked that I had. Just one additional question, if you could clarify. This will not have any impact that we know of on the amount of money that the ratepayers will pay, because the 218 vote was based on different assumptions for funding. So we have included as though we were going to finance this with bond financing, and if we have the low-interest financing, we really have sort of a, an extra, a lot of money in there, which hopefully we could return to citizens. But if not, if we needed it to pay for some additional cost to the project, we would have that. Is that correct?
Correct. So in general terms, the $41 surcharge that was approved last year pays for a $126 million capital project, the assumption of which that $126 million project would be paid by WIFIA at 50% and paid by bonds, the other half would be paid by bonds. We are now confident that we're going to be, obviously receiving the money from WIFIA. And like I said, we're going to be finalizing that very soon. Actually inking that agreement will be contingent upon getting over this environmental hurdle, so I did want to make sure that folks understood that. And then the other thing is we are well down the road with the state revolving fund, and we will be closing the environmental consultation with SRF at the same time as we get over this hurdle with WIFIA. So that's where we find ourselves, is essentially funding the project 50% WIFIA, 50% SRF, which we looked at in the rate study.
And I just wanted to assure ratepayers out there that this hiccup or glitch or delay should have no, absolutely no impact on the amount of money that they are paying for the water and sewer.
As I mentioned, we're, obviously, our goal is to negotiate and come up with a solution to this that doesn't impact or exceed our contingency amount for the project.
Right, right. That's our hope.
Yeah, that's our hope. If that were to happen, we would need to look at and work with a rate consultant to figure out how that might impact the contribution from SRF and what that makeup would look like and what that surcharge, what the ultimate surcharge would be required.
Thank you.
Councilmember Heller?
Thank you. Mr. Casares, thank you for making this set of plans for me. I appreciate it. I asked for a set of 60% drawings, and Mr. Casares provided those to me. Are there any specifications at this point?
We don't have some, we have a couple of key specifications. With the design-build project, we can provide some information. They're not typical specifications. We have procurement packages that have gone out, two that have gone out in particular. We can provide that, those sets of procurement documents to you, the ones that are currently out on the street and that folks are, manufacturers are preparing proposals for. We don't have any formal specifications yet for the conveyance pipeline.
Okay. So, I mean, what I'd like to do is get this technical stuff in front of the WRF CAC, and I'm supposedly the liaison with the WRF CAC, as Marlis reminded me a month or so ago, so I've kind of dropped the ball. But I know CFAC has looked at this package. What do we need to do to get, to schedule a WRF CAC meeting?
Our plan was not to bring some of these intermediate submittals to WRF CAC. The reason being, the 30% design and the basis of the design report for the water reclamation facility component and the conveyance facilities component really set out what the major components of the project. The changes that would impact the project we are bringing to, excuse me, to WRF CAC. So for example, every change order that would have a substantive change in what the WRF project currently looks like is coming to WRF CAC. Same is true for the conveyance facilities portion of the project. We identified a number of changes that we needed to make, and that was bound up in the amendment for the design engineer that we brought to WRF CAC. But as of now, we don't have a meeting on the calendar for the presentation of the 60% design for the water reclamation facility or--
So it's your decision to schedule the WRF CAC meeting, or is the city manager involved with that decision?
It's, yeah, the city staff and the team as a whole is in charge with scheduling those meetings.
So I mean, from my experience, when I'm reviewing change orders, if I have an understanding of the underlying documents, you know, from beginning to end, I'm in a much better position to make a decision. I mean, it makes sense to me that the WRF CAC look at each deliverable as they're issued so that they're really up to speed. I know the WRF CAC has a number of professionals that have been on that committee for four and five years, who probably know more about the project than most of us in this room, certainly more than I do. And it would be a shame to let that knowledge go to waste and leave them out of the loop at this point, particularly if it's supposed to be a citizens advisory committee. And I think we need advice on this project at each deliverable stage. A couple more questions. Do we own the land yet?
That process is going to be finalized here in the next day or so. And I think Rob can, or Mr. Leiva can give a little bit more detail on that, but--
Okay. And so I'm reading about the CDP. I got to tell you, I'm confused about this process. We don't have the CDP yet, right? And in your report, you said there are four things that have to happen before it'll be issued. One is receipt of final plans and specs.
Correct.
But isn't that a few months away?
Well, the interesting thing with some of these conditions, so the Coastal Commission approved the CDP in, with conditions.
Right.
So they said, we'll give you the CDP if you meet these conditions, and oh, you can start construction if you meet these other conditions. And so, because of the nature of this project and some of the requirements that they have, we're working with them and delivering these things in kind of a phased approach. So the way that this is working currently is what we term our final plans and specifications, or what they're terming final plans and specifications for the WRF itself are the 60% design drawings, since those are really the last set of drawings that we will, that will be developed before we actually start construction on the project. Because it's a design-build project, we don't have--
So they're going to issue the CDP based on the 60% drawings?
That's correct.
I see. Okay. Because it's that final.
Just for, and that's what they call it. So their special conditions, I think, are a bit of standard conditions that they take from project to project. And so with a design-bid-build project, where we finish the 100% design, we advertise those documents, and we get bids, and we award to the lowest cost contractor. Under that circumstance, before we would be able to take that project to bid, we would have to give them our final plans and specifications. That's how it will work for the conveyance facilities portion of the project. So around April of next year, we will actually give them final plans and specifications, as well as a narrative report that describes some of their requirements or shows how we're meeting some of their requirements to them before they will allow us to, they will give us the authorization and say, you can go forth and bid this project and start construction.
Okay. And then I assume you're going to start with grading? Is that a fair statement, or?
That's correct.
Okay. So who issues the permit for grading? Does the Coastal Commission, does the county? Who issues that permit?
We do not need permits for, we do not either need, we do not need a grading permit or a building permit from the county to start construction. That's, was a process that we went through with the city attorney and with staff and with the folks from the county as we were going through this coastal development permit process.
So is that part of the consolidation process? The Coastal Commission actually issues the permit for grading?
No, we actually don't get a grading permit.
You don't get a permit?
Correct.
Okay. What else did I want to ask? So in talking about the schedule, we've had a lot of conversations about the schedule. Delays dealing with agencies, obviously, are understandable. The gap now, and I know you're focusing on that end date, and you have some milestones in your report, but the gap between the completion date and these other dates is narrowing every time there's a delay. I'm used to seeing a critical path milestone schedule. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
So this is not really a critical path milestone schedule. It's a list of milestones, and then it's your end date.
Correct.
As an owner, trying to make sure the project stays on track, at what point, with a no critical path milestone schedule, what point as owners can we know that, hey, the project's in trouble, or no, we're doing fine? You know, it's one delay after another, and you see this 14-month gap, but 14 months can disappear quickly if you have delays during construction, agency issues, all kinds of bad things are waiting out there, as you know. So how do you, can you provide a critical path milestone schedule?
Yeah, we can do that. And actually, the milestone schedule that we provide is based on our project schedule that includes the predecessors and the relationships between individual tasks. So as one of those planned completion dates in the milestone schedule is, changes, it has a cascading effect, and it impacts the other, the other elements on the critical path.
So you do, do you have a Gantt chart-type critical path schedule you can provide?
We do. Yeah, we've, I know we've provided something to CFAC previously, the full schedule. If that's something that council would like to see, we can work on kind of simplifying the overall project schedule just to show critical paths and the milestones that we've got on the table.
I can't speak for the rest of council, but I'd really like to see that. The other thing, what's the status of the hydrogeological work?
So we identified and we discussed back when we approved the amendment to Waterworks' contract several months ago, that we are going to be, the path that we decided to go down was, in order to avoid the construction of a new pilot injection well, we were going to work with the folks at Vistra and use an existing Morro Bay Mutual Water Company well in order to do our pumping and injection testing, which, based on discussions with Vistra and back and forth with them and discussions with the Coastal Commission, the determination was made that we can't do that work, either using the existing well or drilling a new pilot well until after we get the CDP in hand. So that's what's been holding up the remaining hydrogeo work that needs to happen on the west side of the highway. So as soon as the coastal development permit is in hand, which is influenced by this latest issue that we're talking about with the environmental agencies, because we do have to have sign-off from them before we get our coastal development permit, then we'll initiate, we'll initiate that work.
Okay. And then, basically, you've got to run a lot of piping from point A to point B, right? Do you have all the easements you need to install the piping?
There are a couple of easements that we are still working on, but that process is ongoing currently. But we do not have every single easement that we need along the pipeline route to construct the pipeline.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Casares.
Thank you.
Great questions. And with that, I will open up public comment for item C-1. Any member of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Seeing a limited room out there and no one coming forward, I'll close public comment, bring it back. Thank you for the great questions. Any further input anybody would like to give for, to Mr. Casares or the staff? Excellent questions, by the way.
I do.
Sure, absolutely.
I think it's really important, if we have this citizens advisory committee that knows the project, to let their knowledge and expertise go to waste. I think it's really important those meetings get scheduled and that they get these deliverables in advance of them coming to us. You know, I want the experts to look at it and tell us what's what and say, yeah, this is fine, let's go. I don't have the expertise to review all these plans and make decisions as a council member, and we've got these people who've worked on the project for four and five years who know it like the back of their hand. So I think if it's really going to be a legitimate citizens advisory committee, and it's going to help the council, which we need help with this, this is a very technical project, that they need to look at all the packages.
Thank you. Comments? None? Okay. Staff, thank you for that. This is receive and file, and we appreciate it. We'll go ahead and move forward with item C-2. Everybody okay still, ready to move here? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a biofluid break. I'll give you two minutes. How's that? No, I take three or four. Thanks. Morro Bay City Council, October 22nd, 2019. This is item C-2. Review of Public Safety Power Shut-Off, or PSPS Preparation and Adoption of Resolution 89-19 for the City of Morro Bay Emergency Management Plan, Adding Annex K Electrical Power Shut-Off Continuity of Operations and Adopt Resolution 90-19 Approving a Budget Adjustment Not to Exceed $36,000 From the General Fund Emergency Reserves to a New Capital Project for PSPS Preparation. Turn it over to Chief Knuckles for his presentation. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And California fire weather has been changing drastically, especially the last five years. By the year 2030, State of California is thinking that, they're predicting a 300% growth in fire activity in the state of California. And it's all due to climate change. The biggest thing for us, that Southern California weather, that is used to the Fowen-type winds, the sundowner winds or the Santa Ana winds, are moving north. And we're filling it up here, and especially up in Northern California, in Butte County and Chico area, they're filling it up there. The risk of firefighters, correction, wildfires have been increasing because of higher temperatures and higher sustained peak winds, and the biggest case is because of lower humidity in our vegetation. Fire season is almost year-round, with the largest fire in California history being the Thomas Fire in San Barbara County, that basically wasn't contained until, I think, Christmas Eve. And that fire showed fire behavior that we would usually see in July or August. So California has changed. And when PG&E built a bunch of infrastructure through California in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, these winds weren't around when that occurred. So they're beginning to see some failure points of their infrastructure. Now, just a few weeks ago, PG&E in Southern California Edison initiated a public safety power shut-off that affected 34 out of 58 counties in the state of California. PG&E, which is mostly central Northern California, it affected 386 cities, 738,000 PG&E customers, 927 water and wastewater facilities, 260 hospitals, 200 public safety buildings, 405 schools. And it's tough to try to estimate how many actually people that affected, and early reports are saying close to over 2 million people have been affected with that power shut-off. During that time, Northern California had setting amount of power winds with higher temperatures and lower relative humidities. PG&E reported that they had, as I stated early, 50 infrastructure items that were destroyed because of the wind, but no fires were caused by their equipment during that time when the power shut off. PG&E is considering this a success story, and the fire chiefs in this county are concerned that this is going to stay for a while until infrastructure is changed, or some laws are changed, or creation of micro grids to help out communities, so they're not taking a whole community out, they're just taking out neighborhoods. As you probably noticed, in San Barbara County, when they have a PS, they are affecting only about 600 customers at a time, where in Northern California, they're affecting thousands at a time. So recommendations, adopt resolution 89-19, accepting revised City of Morro Bay's emergent, emergency management plan, adding Annex K Electrical Power Shut-Off Continuity of Operations Plan, and adopt resolution 99-19, approving a budget adjustment not to exceed $36,000 from the general fund reserves to a new PSPS capital project to assist staff maintaining critical city functions during the electrical power shut-off. So to reduce the chance of accidental fires ignited by some of the electrical components by PG&E, the California Public Utilities Commission has given direction to all the public utilities to de-energize electrical grids that are during heightened fire-risk conditions. You know, currently today, PG&E is looking at Northern California for a power shut-off again in the same area on Wednesday. They're looking at Sacramento Valley, North Bay areas, Northern Sierras, out by Auburn, Nevada County, heading to the backside of Paradise. That also includes Butte County and Chico that was hit-- That also includes Butte County and Chico that was hit hard with fires last year. The CPUC has also given private utilities the sole discretion to shut down the power without using any direction from emergency managers in, in California, both at the state, regional, or local levels. So, some of the things that they consider for turning off our power is red flag warnings, low humidity, usually below 20%, that's kind of a magic number for in the fire service, below 20%, a cigarette can start a fire, just cigarette ashes out of a window. Forecasted sustained winds above 25 mile per hour with gusts up to 45 miles per hour, if you really think about it, our county has that very often. Site-specific conditions such as temperature, terrain, or local climate, on-the-ground, real-time wildfire-related information from PG&E Wildfire Safety. They actually have a division within their company that has installed multiple weather sensors and cameras throughout California. There are some new ones installed on the Highway 41 corridor area that helps them, help predict weather for our county, but also for any type of fire weather that may be occurring. And, and local and city and county emergency managers are not part of any decision-making of this PSPS. When you, as council members, receive the text messages, I receive them at the same time, or our county OES is receiving them at the same time. It's pretty amazing, the process they're taking. So, Morro Bay, we are in geographical area number six, and you're going to probably see it on your PowerPoint presentation in front of you, it'd be tough to see it on, it is the smallest portion of it. And we're right on the coast, all the way from Santa Barbara going all the way up to Monterey. Currently, zone two, three, four, and five are being watched for a power shut-off up on Wednesday. Those are the same locations that they did last time. They're, because they're going to be expecting some mid-elevations and foot, high winds and mid-elevations where Paradise is at, in the foothills in the Sierra, and also elevated terrain on the west side of Sacramento Valley, and also south San Francisco, North Bay locations. So, places like Woodside, up in that area. The map on the left will kind of show you the grid system coming into Morro Bay. You see where the arrow is, that's where Morro Bay is at. The big red system is, actually was developed for the Morro Bay Power Plant when it was running, and where it provided power to the grid, but also provided power to Diablo Canyon as a backup power system for Diablo Canyon. The blue, just above the red, it goes, actually connects near Highway 5, but goes through Paso Robles, and it kind of affects our north side of town. The switchyard in the back of Morro Bay Power Plant used to be more significant, because it was very important for the operation of Diablo Canyon at the time when it was built. But soon, when PG&E sold the Morro Bay Power Plant, the connection between Morro Bay and the rest of the county to Diablo Canyon has been disconnected. So, Diablo Canyon Power does not power any home, commercial building in San Luis Obispo County right now. It's also disadvantaged for us, because now we just lost a second source of power to Morro Bay, so if they cut the one power coming into Morro Bay, it affects our whole city. So, if you look at this, the red line, as I said before, comes in, into the switchyard in our county, and the blue line comes down through Paso Robles and Atascadero, and it affects Tascarell, Adelaide, Cayucus, and Cambria. The red line, it goes, extends all the way close to Santa Maria and provides power from Morro Bay, northeast San Luis Obispo, Roy Grande, Lampoke, correction, I'm sorry, Lopez Lake area, Lopez Canyon, and also Nopomo, all the way to Las Padres Forest. Because it is, switchyard is here in Morro Bay. So, because of that, if fire weather conditions exist with high temperatures, low humidity, winds over 25 miles per hour with gusts up to 45 miles per hour, from the target range on Highway 1, all the way through the backside of San Luis Obispo, all the way through Lopez Canyon, Lopez Lake, through the east side of Nopomo, all the way down to the Las Padres Forest, if they have those conditions and they need power off in that area, up to 100% of Morro Bay will be shut off during that time, because we don't have a micro grid system to protect us from that one line going through our community. If fire weather conditions exist with high temperatures, low humidity, and winds over 25, gusts up to 45, on the west side of Paso Robles, Atascadero, Adelaide, the top side of Cayucus, the north side of Morro Bay can be affected with that, but at least we will still have some of our infrastructure running on those type of power shut-offs. So, coming up with the plan, we recognize the importance to set our guidelines that we think we use in our emergency management plan that you approved last January. And basically, we recognize a regional approach and a partnership in managing our power shut-off is key to all the communities in our county with our limited resources that we do have. We do believe as a staff, electrical power shut-off plan must be in concert with format with everything else we have in our city's basic plan and the other 10 other hazards that we identify in our city, such as earthquake, hazardous materials, multiple casualties, flood, fires, tsunamis, civil disturbance, Diablo Canyon, power plant incidents, terrorism, adverse weather. And we'd like to add one more, and that would be electrical power shut-off continuity of operations plan. Now, just like when I worked as a paramedic, I would have a patient, and I would have my protocols, I may be working off two or three protocols at the same time. It is quite possible, if we did have a tsunami, we're going to be working on a tsunami annex, and also on the continuity of operations because of lack of electricity, because it may be affecting some of the key functions in our, in our city. So, that's the beauty of our emergency plan, that you can work one, or two, or three annexes at the same time to come up with the same goals to help you with an emergency. By adding an annex to our emergency plan, this will also meet the state and federal mandates, so just in case, in the future, if there's any future funding through Homeland Security, or FEMA, or California Office of Emergency Services, it complies 100% with our, with our format and guidelines for emergency planning in our communities. So, by, by state and federal mandate, the basic plan, which is part one of our emergency plan, requires your approval by resolution, and since we're adding one more hazard to the plan, changes are made to the basic plan, which will need your approval. Parts two through eight are working documents, and those don't require your approval, definitely your awareness and your training on them, but those include the, the specific annexes, which we would have 11, our resource directory, our resource, recovery resource directory, emergency operations center position checklist, debris management, shelter and welfare, and our city's evacuation plan. So, by, by looking at our emergency plan format, and by establishing SMART goals and based on priorities within our city, we created the following management objectives for our electrical power shut-off event in Morro Bay. Provide for the safety of the public, city employees and volunteers and first responders always. Ensure that the emergency service delivery efforts, law enforcement, harbor fire, and emergency medical services are uninterrupted from any power outage. Provide for timely and accurate release of incident information to the public, media, first responders, agency administrators, cooperators by the EOC Public Information Officer, Office through a wide range of mediums. Protect the continuity of critical infrastructure, water and sewer, processes, essential services, and facilities with installation of temporary power generation if backup power does not already exist. Ensure coordination with law enforcement to maintain the protection of the public and maintain accountability of the portable generator security. Ensure the needs of the medically dependent individuals and those who, with access and functional needs are connected and assisted as needed or as able as we can. Ensure a fuel distribution plan is developed that is implementation and provides for continuous operation. If needed, due to weather or longevity of the power shut-off, ensure that resource centers are identified and can be supported. That will be in concert also with what PG&E will be providing in our community also. Ensure close coordination and communication with the City of Morro Bay, San Luis Obispo County Operational EOC, San Luis Obispo County Office of Emergency Services, and the San Luis Obispo County Public Health. Ensure close coordination and communication between local hospitals, care facilities, medical transportation, and the City of Morro Bay. Maintain close coordination and communication between all affected public agencies, incident management, and PG&E for the activation of the contingency plan. Ensure that, make sure the management actions and efforts will be focused on serving, safeguarding, and protecting the cities, citizens of Morro Bay. You know, some of the current action items that we have been working on, and we have addressed most of these, and some of these that we're still working on, some is to reevaluate and develop backup power for our two emergency radio frequency repeater sites we have here in our community. Develop a plan for backup fuel for critical vehicles, infrastructure, essential boats, and rescue crafts. Evaluate and plan for area command dispatch centers at either EOCs within our city. Evaluate and plan for secondary communications within the operational area, which is San Luis Obispo County, by amateur radio, emergency services areas, or other city EOCs. That's using our ham radios that we have at both of our EOCs. Create an operations policy to maintain all city vehicles at three-quarter full of fuel at all times, at the end of the day. Explore oxygen supply, storage, and delivery of many medical-dependent patients, public and private partnerships. That's something that's hard to do at this time, but we're still looking at that. Explore options and develop a plan to secure our hard-line, seven phone lines at the EOC. We do have seven copper lines at our EOC at the community center, just for this. Identify high human risk buildings to evaluate their public safety power shut-off plan, and reach out to the business community to discuss the PSPS also. And I just recently made a presentation to TBID a few days ago. And also, develop an information gathering program to identify the medically-dependent residents in our community. We anticipate about 310 folks and residents so far in our community that are medically dependent on electricity. Research the needs and plan for possible 911 notification centers using our Community Emergency Response Team, CERT. If our cell service does go down, because we want to make sure that 100% of our citizens can dial 911, and we want to identify items needed from each department to function for a minimum of seven days without PG&E's power. So, staff has recognized two critical opportunities to secure our essential services and communications. To meet our management objectives during our electrical power shut-off, staff requesting a budget adjustment not to exceed $36,000. One critical opportunity is to provide additional gasoline and diesel fuel storage for our essential city vehicles and wastewater treatment plant operations, and that will not exceed $12,000. Our second critical opportunity is to provide a continuation of city phone and internet services during electrical power shut-off. The data point for our phone system, which is internet-based, and internet is in San Luis Obispo, but they provide generator power as mandated by state law. The city's phone and IT server is located in City Hall, and the City Hall at this time doesn't have any backup power. So, we will be looking at to either power up City Hall with a generator, and that would be estimated to be a 45 KW backup power there with a manual switch, or move the phone system and server system to fire station down the street, and if we could do that, below $24,000. But both, either one of those two projects will be less than $24,000. I just want, I'm going to the last slide right now, just to talk about our public outreach at this time. We've been working closely with PG&E and other communities in our county to make sure we have the same message, multi-platform approach to communicating the multiple facet items that would be involved during a public shut-off, which include generator safety, how to open up your garage door when the power's out, intersection safety when the lights go out, smoke alarms, food safety, communications, medical devices, where can you get your medical devices charged, supply kits, car safety, and what happens when we do have a power shut-off. We do also have this information on a new link on our city website, and we did have a public workshop along with our mitigation plan update on October 10th. We're going to provide more, and we're going to provide some public-private correction, power shut-off information during this weekend's Health Resource Fair also at the fire station. So, the staff recommendations again is to adopt a resolution 89-19 to help us with adding Annex K Electrical Power Shut-Off Continuity of Operations Plan to our emergency plan, and also adopt resolution 90-19 Approving Budget Adjustment Not to Exceed $36,000 to help staff maintain services during a power shut-off. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your leadership in the county. I know I mentioned a couple of weeks ago that we attended a countywide meeting and talked a lot about this, and I know that you were recognized as, as a leader in helping to move this initiative forward. Thank you for evaluating our local needs as well. Any council questions at this time?
Yes.
Go ahead, start us off, yes.
So, Chief, thanks for the presentation. So, the sense I get about all of this is, there's not going to be any near-term solution relative to grid improvements or changes. That's the kind of thing that takes time and money to put in place. I'm not sure that there's a political solution at the state level that's going to happen real soon. It kind of feels like, hey, you're on your own. Is that a misinterpretation of what we're up against here, or what do you think?
I, I think you're, you're hitting the subject pretty right on the button on that. There are some political pressure occurring up in Sacramento right now, and as I said earlier, the governor is not really happy with what's going on. We're hoping that he'll give direction to the, to the power companies, especially, it's called microgridding. That is one solution, at least to get us through the next few years until they can solidify their whole system in California. And without the weather changing, without the high winds that we're getting, they have a lot of miles of electrical lines out there that will be causing problems for the state of California.
Right. Okay. There's a note in the report about a PG&E text alerts and so forth in advance of the event. Is that really realistic, or, I mean, I heard this other one that happened, there was no notification, whatever, it's just like, we're doing this, and it was done, and...
Well, the notification was, was given to us by accident. It's the second time they've done it to our county. But it was within the 48-hour guideline that they tried to push for.
Okay.
I mean, they're trying to guess weather, they're trying to forecast areas that are going to have low humidity with high winds. They're being very aggressive with it. And I would say it's a 50/50 shot that we'll get 48 hours notice.
Okay.
I think typically average is less than 24 hours.
Okay. So, the 310 medically-dependent folks that we know about, do you think there are more? Is that a pretty accurate number, or...
We're using, we're using multiple sources for that. First of all, everyone should sign up on PG&E baseline customers.
Okay.
But that list is not going to be accurate, because that list was first generated to have folks who are medically dependent to get a price reduction on their electric bill. So, it wasn't meant for that. But there's other lists that we're going off. We're going to be going off the San Luis Obispo OES Functional Access Needs List, they have a list they'll be sharing with us. There's also a list, we've been using Senior Meals on Wheels list, we're going to be using that list too.
Okay.
But one thing that Penny Bornstein, our, our health director for our county, she is going to, her board of supervisors to get a resolution passed that she'll be able to request a Medicare beneficiary-dependent population list as placed by the federal government, that folks that do have, buy medically-dependent machinery such as oxygen or CPAP machines for, for nighttime sleeping, or electric ibuterol machines, they're actually on a list, a federal list, and will be able, they'll have access to that list within three hours after the PSPS is announced. She'll be able to request that from the federal government.
That's great. So, we get this list of people. How are we going to educate them and prepare them for these PSPSs?
Well, we're trying to reach out as best we can right now, but we all know that not all citizens are going to be informed about this. We're going to be using our Community Emergency Response Team, and working with their director at this time, developing a policy. We're going to be, we have 11 zones in our city, and we're going to use the same zones the police department used for their BEATs, and we use for our evacuation. We're just going to divide and conquer, we're going to be knocking on doors, we're going to be handing them information, and then we're going to check on them every two or three days by knocking on their doors with our CERT team.
So, I'm a CERT member, by the way, so please call on me. Is there a place here for Neighborhood Watch, or any organizations like that to help? Because in, in the middle of the crisis, really you need your neighbors almost knocking on the door to making sure to see if you're okay, if you're, what you're going to do with your power and your, your CPAP or whatever it is that you need. I mean, what are your thoughts about that?
Well, Neighborhood Watch is definitely the volunteers in our city, we're definitely going to be using the police volunteers. And going back to CERT, that's, the whole concept of CERT is one, be able to take care of yourself, and your first order is to go check up on your neighbors, and take care of your neighbors, then come to work, so that you can come to work with, with the situational awareness of your neighborhood. And that's the whole concept of CERT, is take care of yourself, take care of your immediate neighbors, then come to, to us for help, or come to us to help.
Okay. And this refresh my memory, fire station, police station have backup generators, right?
Yes, sir.
We do not have one for this building, is that correct, or do we?
We do not.
Okay. And City Hall does not have one?
No, they do not.
Community Center?
They have one on the EOC side of the building, so that is in the multipurpose room, it's all on the senior side, so that'd be the fireplace room, the pool table room... It's all on the senior side, so that'd be the fireplace room, the pool table room, and the front foyer there. So everything on that side of the building has backup power by natural gas.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yeah, that was, and thank you for responding to the questions I had before, but a couple more came to my mind, one of which was how many backup generators do we have in town? So I appreciate that info. Do you have a preference for whether you would want to back up the City Hall or move the equipment to the fire station?
Well, I think cost efficiency, sooner or later, we, we need to grow our computer room, it's pretty tiny, and I think if we can do it less than putting a new generator at City Hall, I think that's probably the most efficient. We are working with Digital West to come up with some cost-efficient ways to bring in dark, now I'm talking out of my league, dark fiber cable to the fire station so that we can attach the, the connection that we have at City Hall to the firehouse.
And the fire station is actually a more secure building, correct, than City Hall?
Yeah, much more secure, and it also has the room, the climate control, and it just makes sense. That's, it's going to be the strongest building during an earthquake, and we have nine days of backup power.
Okay. And my last question, concerns where we're going to get the money from this, and I'm just curious to know if we could use Measure Q funds? I know they have a, some reserve funds. Is that possible, or would you prefer using general funds?
It would probably be possible under the category of public safety, which is, was one of the four elements defined by the council resolution. If that would be the case, you would probably want to defer this back to the committee, perhaps, to make a recommendation, given that the size of the request, up to $36,000. We just felt it was better to recommend general fund emergency reserves. We're not recommending using any utility funds for the tank that may be down at the, at the utilities yard, given that corp yard, people may use it as well, so it seemed like one funding source made sense, given the amount.
Yeah, I was just curious. Thanks.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. And before I ask my questions, I know that we received an email yesterday announcing a, a PSPs for Slow County, and Chief Knuckles got right on it, let PG&E know that their message did not match their map. PG&E subsequently rescinded the PSPs, and I really thank you, Chief, for taking charge of that and making that happen. I know you have reached out to Casa de Flores and Bayside Care. Can you tell us briefly that, that they are being taken care of during PSPs?
Yes, sir. So Bayside, they're mandated by the state of California to have full generation power on their facility, so they will be up and running, not only the rooms, the support services, also their kitchen and food. On the other side, Casa de Flores is assisted living. They do have some outlets throughout the building that, that's supported by that generator next door, but their kitchen's going to be up, their support services are going to be up, some will be in the dark or in the shade throughout the day, but they plan to stay in place also.
And do you have your eye on other at-risk groups that we have, like Ocean View Manor, Garden House, that kind of...
Yes. Our farm marshal, Captain Vera, he has been traveling town when he's able to. There's a lot of stuff in town that he, we're trying to prioritize first, especially on the care facilities. For example, Garden House, they're, I like their concept. They don't have full generation power for the whole building, but they're bringing the generator in, they run the refrigerator and run their kitchen, they run a few lights with extension cords throughout the building. So I kind of see that's probably the, the most cost-efficient way. Some of these facilities are going to make it work for them. But we're going to be reaching out not only to them, but also to the hotels. I mean, that is a big question about our hotels. We're going to be asking them to learn about their elevators, because we have a few elevators in town, and I want to make sure they have the tools so we can open the door up to get people out. And are they going to keep residents in their hotels if they don't have support services such as food or laundry service or, or just lighting? So in retrospect, looking at a power shut-off, it's more daunting to the community of our size, especially when we're 100% cut off, than an earthquake, a tsunami, a flood, a wildfire. Because when we have those individual hazards, it affects pockets of town. So we may lose power to pockets of town, but we don't lose it to, to our wastewater treatment plant, or we don't lose it to 1405 Teresa Road, or we don't lose it to other care facilities in our community. It's usually pockets, and we can handle that through mutual aid and, and just get the job done. But when we're cutting power up to four, five, six, seven days at times, that is going to affect our citizens pretty hard. It's going to affect our grocery stores, it's going to affect our pharmacies, it's going to affect, it's going to affect day-to-day life, and some of it's critical to some of our citizens in our community. So this is something, to me, it's much more daunting to us than an earthquake or tsunami.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate the thorough approach you're taking to this.
Councilmember Addis?
I'll reiterate the thank yous. On the fuel, when are you, when, would that be you'd buy it at, when the PSPs is happening? Or you buy it now and store it?
We'll buy it now, and a good example is, right now, after Hurricane Sandy came to the council through Measure Q request, and we now have, we, we get our large apparatus, fire apparatus, fuel at the fire station, and we get delivered every Wednesday here in Morro Bay. And the reason for that was, and I get delivered every week, it leaves me about 400 gallons minimum storage every week, and that is roughly three weeks of fuel for me. So if we have a significant event, then we have fuel to go fight fire. In New Jersey, they had hospitals and schools burned down because they ran out of fuel for the fire engines. They just started evacuating people out of these buildings. So we learned from other people's mistakes, so we have a fuel now there. Our goal is to bring a gasoline tank to the fire station right next to the diesel tank. We, as a fire department, will use it with the four gasoline vehicles that we have, just to keep the fuel rotated, and just leave it at that. So I also want to leave as maximum of fuel in that, as much as possible, about 400 gallons. This could be not just for our vehicles, but PDs, harbors, or any other essential services vehicle that we would have during a power shut-off. And then the diesel fuel tank at the wastewater treatment plant is to help supplement what they have on their generation system. Well, I understand they have about three days backup fuel for them that can run, and they would transfer the fuel between the tanks. Also, they would, maybe we need a skip loader, or we need a backhoe operating, and we can use our diesel fuel there, also at the fire station if needed for those essential equipment.
And then, I think these are on the website, but I just want to make sure for the public, I love all the flyers that you did. I found them very, very helpful and grabbed a set to take home with me, so people can go on to the Morro Bay City website and print these if they want to?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And there's the special place just for the shut-offs on the website?
Yes.
Okay. And then, how long do you think before you would know who all the residents are? I know you were saying within three hours, the, once that resolution passed at the county, but just till you have a sense or feel good about the sense of resident, the number of residents who are medically dependent on electricity? Like, how long until you really have that sense for Morro Bay?
Well, I don't understand the laws much about what the public health officer has to do, but she cannot request the list until the event occurs.
Got it.
And then she usually gets the list. Now, we are still, we still have three or four other lists. We're just going to combine them, and we're just going to go walk the streets. We have active about 44 CERT members. Our next drill, what they'll have in November, we're going to train on it. We are, they've already trained on situational awareness in 11 different zones, so that if we have a tsunami or earthquake, we would divide and conquer and send certain number of members to each of the zones, and they buy hand and paper and buy picture on their phone, they're going to take pictures of the zones, bring it back to the EOC, and then we, it's called situational awareness. So they're already training on this, and these folks are eager to help, and I think that's a great application of their services.
And then my last one is on just personal cell phones. I read 24 hours, I read maybe 72 hours from different companies. I'm not talking about like a resident's ability to charge their own phone, but to access their cell service. Is there, is there a general guideline for what people should expect?
So we've been doing some research on this. We have six cell sites in our community, and we've got two large ones that are already on generator power, so they will kick on, and the companies will come and fill them. The four other ones, we have been told that is their company's mission to get a generator on those cell sites. They have 24 to 48 hours battery backup power, and then hopefully the companies will come through and throw some generators on that. I do believe that with the two, at least the two cell sites that we do have, we can cover most of town, and 911 calls always drops other calls. So even if you're on the phone line and using bandwidth with the cell service and someone dials 911 and you're in its way, it's going to drop your call and let the 911 call go through. So I was concerned at first, not having cellphone coverage, coming up, we are going to come up with a secondary plan by setting up different locations in town, 911 call centers, just like the old days, you used to have the old fire and police pole stations on street corners. Setting those up with our CERT members with pop-up tents throughout town if cell service does drop, because that's one of my concerns, is people having the ability to call 911.
That's it, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Chief. A few questions. Page 249, the not to exceed $36,000, are there any grant opportunities for that? I'm sure you've already looked, but I just thought I'd ask.
We'll be looking, but at this time, I can't find anything.
Nothing that you can do. Page 251 of the staff report, last bullet point on the top, "Local county and emergency managers, quote, 'are not part of the decision-making for PSPs events.' Is there anything the council or the mayor can do to help advocate for that, and at what level would that occur? Write letters, make calls? What, what could we do?
Anything with the Public Utility Commission. They're the ones that enforce or created the rules, allowing private business to make those decisions. That's the bottom line.
Yeah. We know they're the bad guys, but, so the advocacy, what about you said the governor's very concerned about it? Letters to the governor would be important, possibly?
Yes. One of his, he's already stated, one of his objectives is to allow decisions made by also local emergency managers.
Great. Page 254 on the staff report, public outreach. The issue for me of concern is, in talking to just a few people on the street, they've heard a little bit about PSPs, and this is no blame on your department or anybody else, but they have no idea of what's going on and what they need. My sense is, we're, we're not reaching probably 90, 95% of the population, and I don't know what we can do, like, this is kind of a question. Is there anything else we can do that could get the message out, not only to the medical-dependent on electricity individuals, but the general population? Are we missing anything? I just, people seem to either be putting their head in the sand or just not listening.
Well, we're finding a lot of folks are in denial this is going to happen.
Yeah.
So they're not accepting the information. We're letting PG&E take the lead also on their communication. You've seen all the commercials, you've seen all their advertising, you've seen all their flyers, you've seen all their outreach. We're letting them take the lead on this, so we have one message going out, and we, we want to make sure that we have, we're in concert with their message. We're going to continue with our social media. I know there is a portion of our public that doesn't enjoy social media, but definitely partnerships with KSBY TV, with our newspapers, and just, just hit it hard. And anytime we have a public event at the fire station, for example, like this weekend, we will have a table, I will have someone sitting there, probably my fire marshal is going to be sitting there, talking about PSPs and handing out our eight or nine flyers that we can, we're trying to hand out a few hundred of those if we could. It's just continuation, and, but we, I do believe that we do need to take the lead from PG&E, because it's their mess, and we want to make sure their message is consistent.
Yeah, thank you. And page 255, your top bullet points, I'd add medication storage, you've cited it several times, but I'd add a bullet point, or consider adding a bullet point, medication storage, you've referenced it, but I think it'd be important to add to that list. I'll just add one comment on the DME list, is really what you're talking about, for discovering patients in town that are on medical equipment. It's a HIPAA-protected Medicare database, and the only way to get access to that legally is in an emergency situation, so I'm glad to see that Penny is working on that at the county level. That is a fairly complete list of not only Medicare recipients that are on durable medical equipment, machines, but also SSI patients. But what it will miss, miss are commercial insured patients under Medicare age or non-SSI. And I don't know how we get that data, but we've got people that are not on Medicare, that are on equipment, that somehow need to get the message as well, and that's just a comment with that. So I'm glad to see that that, that's all happening. With that, I'll open public comment. Anybody wish to comment on item C2, please come forward. Seeing no one in the audience willing to do that, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council for a recommendation motion, or a motion, I should say.
I move to adopt Resolution 89-19, accepting the revised City of Morro Bay Emergency Management Plan, adding NXK Electrical Power Shut-Off Continuity, Continuity of Operations Plan, and adopt Resolution Number 90-19, approving a budget adjustment not to exceed $36,000 from General Fund Emergency Reserves to a new PSPs capital project to assist staff maintaining critical city functions during an electrical power shut-off.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Davis for the staff recommendation, second by Councilmember McPherson. Any further discussion? I'll just add, again, my thanks for your leadership. I just am so concerned about this for our community and the communities around us. I appreciate all the work that you're doing with limited resources, that once again, unfunded mandates coming down from entities like the PUC to small cities like this can be crippling, and here's another example of that. I'm sorry to get on my soapbox, but so be it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Mayor Hiddings?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
That brings us to item C-3. This is adoption of Resolution 90-19, approving a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2019-20 for the employee lump sum and equity payments for negotiated, per negotiated memorandum of understanding, and unrepresented confidential and management benefits resolutions, and authorizing, I think it's, that's authorizing, it should be, right? Not authoring?
Authorizing.
Yeah, authorizing one-time lump sum payments to all qualifying full-time employees. Ms. Callaway?
Sure.
Turn it to you, please.
Thank you. I'm going to kick this item off, and we can always phone a friend next to me here if we need some further clarification. This is, I'm going to do a fairly brief intro here, as the council has changed since these contracts were negotiated. So these were negotiated specifically with SEIU and the Morro Bay Firefighters Association in September of 2017. They're two-year contracts. As you know, negotiations start out in closed session, but ultimately, the contracts come back to council for approval before they're enacted. As part of those negotiations, there were COLA trigger, COLA, cost of living, triggers built into the contracts based on, on certain conditions being met with revenues. You'll also recall that in about 2017, you had some transitions in staff, so we were kind of catching up on what those negotiated contracts were. We recognized that the COLAs were, the triggers for the COLAs were met, brought that back to council and included that in the budgets that were adopted for 1819. We did not recognize that there were lump sum payment provisions in, in that year as well. So that was an oversight on, on our part. However, this year, when we were examining COLAs and getting towards year-end, realized the lump sum payments were in there. Those payments are based on, if the forecasted revenues in the negotiated contracts came in at or above the forecast triggers in the negotiated MOUs, that the SEIU and firefighter employees would receive 20% of those overages as lump sum payments. I want to clarify and make it... I want to clarify and make it very clear that these are non-perceval payments, and that was part of the, I understand the overall reasoning for the negotiation, to try to be fair to employees, understanding our financial constraints, and eliminate or reduce our per's obligations. So it was a creative attempt at doing those. We were quite significantly over the forecasted revenues in 1819, keeping in mind that those were forecasts probably developed in 1617, since the contracts were a couple of years old, and that speaks to why the overage was so substantial. It was about $700,000, which is 20%, $142,776 for 1819. For 1819, the impact would hit the SEIU, Firefighters Association, and the Police Officers Association. Those are contracted, committed to agreements that the council has made. The recommendation is to divide that among 93 recipients. That is more than belong to SEIU, the firefighters group, and the Morro Bay Police Officers Association. The reason being that historically, the employees that don't have an ability to negotiate for themselves, meaning the confidential unrepresented employees, the managers and the directors and city manager, the same provisions that are agreed to in SEIU are extended to those employees. So we've included those in that calculation. Going back, as I mentioned, we didn't do anything in 1718 despite the commitment, so we reviewed those year-end results and found $38,000 overage in the forecasted revenues. If you divide that among 80 recipients, it's $478. Those 80 recipients are the, that we're proposing are the SEIU members, firefighter members, and then again, extension to the employees that don't negotiate for themselves, the unrepresented confidential management directors and city managers. You'll note, I did not include the Morro Bay Police Officers Association in that group. They had a different contract elected not to negotiate similar terms, so they weren't part of that provision for 1718. The $181,000 that those two years represent would be in a budget adjustment from emergency reserves, because that's where our year-end cash flows to. And then lastly, there's a third payout that was recently negotiated in July of this year. There were openers in the SEIU provision, recognizing that our harbor patrol and business coordinator are below market. However, the harbor fund does not have the capacity to sustain permanent ongoing increases for those members. A side letter agreement was negotiated and passed by the council that if certain revenue triggers were met, meaning revenues over expenditures at year end, lump sum, again, non-perceval payments would be paid out. The harbor department is closing with a surplus this year of over $16,000, which by side letter agreement would trigger a $2,000 payment to each of those five represented employees. So there's a request for a $10,000 budget adjustment. That amount of money would come out of the harbor fund accumulation reserves, because it was linked directly to the performance of the harbor fund. So with that, I'm going to close. I know it's kind of a complicated subject, so if there's any questions, we can certainly answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. I'll try to make this a question. I'll start, by the way, since I was here during these negotiations, I'll try to make this a question, but you weren't here. So would you agree that this was an attempt by the city in looking at its tenure plan, realizing that there were going to be potentially significant financial challenges, that above and beyond COLAs, in order to possibly advantage and make employees whole with regard to internal and external equity in the market, that a risk-sharing agreement was established between the city and these organizations based upon reaching revenue goals?
I understand that to completely be the intent of the provisions.
Okay. And would you also agree that it was prudent of the city to attempt to and achieve a non-perceval compensation, which would not be compounded and continue to grow in the future?
Correct.
With regard to this kind of an agreement? And this, would you agree that this is a substitute for a merit increase? In other words, this negotiation would be different than negotiating a percentage automatic increase based upon merit, as opposed to this, which is a risk-sharing agreement based upon achieving revenues?
Yeah. I get a little caught up with the merit term, because typically, employees are evaluated every year, and if they're performing well, they can go to their next step. If they're not topped out, and we allow for that in our budget estimates. This was an attempt at not adding an ongoing base salary for employees, given the outlook that was ahead, and a non-perceval base salary.
And in looking at, in the past, previous external equity comparisons for a number of employee groups, we were behind, so to speak, with regard to wages and salaries. And this also could be considered a retention and recruitment tool. Would you agree?
This is definitely considered a retention tool in terms of good faith effort on behalf of the city, to recognize that we are at the lower end of the scale in the majority of our classifications compared to the county.
And my last question is, is this not a contractual obligation that must be honored?
With respect to SEIU?
Except for the non-union add-on folks, the directors and the city manager and those, yeah?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions. I was there during those negotiations, so I was trying to get that out. Other questions? I'll open it up.
I don't have any questions. I'm just impressed that, I thought for a minute I was in a court of law.
Yes. Well, no. I remember intimately going through this, so I was trying to make sure I captured the points and the rationale behind developing it. So, I don't know. I don't know if that was a compliment or not, but...
No, I want to say that...
Chris looked at me and goes...
That was a well-done recap of all of the good reasons that we negotiated this provision.
And I was trying to make them questions as well, so. Other questions? I want to open it up to... Yeah.
Yeah, I just have a couple. Can you remind us what those, when and what those revenue targets were based on?
Sure. So the contracts that were negotiated for SEIU and the Firefighters Association called out specific forecast measures for property tax, property tax in lieu, sales tax, our Prop 172, public safety sales tax, and TOT. Those forecast projections likely were based off of 2016-ish estimates, 2017 during the last forecast update. And those are, that's the ones that came in about $38,000 over. So our property tax was above forecast in 1718 by $204,000. The rest of them were below $50,000, and then our TOT was under the forecast by 123. So it balanced those out. Similarly, in 1819, the police officers, SEIU and firefighters, the forecasts were, again, based off, that was two years prior, because these were committed to sources. The same triggers, property tax, VLFA, property tax in lieu, sales tax, our Prop 172, sales tax, and TOT. And if you recall, when management partners originally did the forecast, there were recessions built in, and you know, a forecast is a crystal ball. You don't really know what's going to happen in two years. You're making your best guess. And that's why we were so substantially over in 1819 at $700,000.
So this was the management partner's tenure forecast that was used, not your annual budget forecast for...
These triggers are based on the management partner's forecast, which is included. That's the same forecast I use. I just update it every year. Prior finance director would have used that as well.
I see. Okay. And I know that these are multi-year contracts, so is that same provision still in the contracts? Or where do we stand with that?
So these contracts expire June 30th of 2020. So we will be starting to renegotiate again soon.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Heller? Any questions?
Yeah, the question I have is, and I'm not going to pose this, but it seems to me these lump sum payments, basically, it doesn't make sense to be to base them on increased revenues. You know, isn't there some way that it could be based more on performances relative to reducing the structural deficit, as opposed to just increasing the top line, a lot of which is going to happen based on the council approving increased fees and other things? So that's just, the first thing that comes to mind. So another way to do it in the future.
I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's other ways to do it, and I guess as we go into negotiations, we can, you know, we'll be exploring those. The key framework of this is, to the extent possible, not incurring perceval compensation, and understanding that we don't want to continue to fall further and further behind in the county. So that's where having some creative thoughts on how to do that comes up. One of the challenges, if you're not, if you're basing on revenues and expenditures, per se, we don't want to encourage not buying things that the city really needs to operate effectively in order to reduce expenditures to trigger something.
I was hoping you would do that.
Well, and so in the instance of our PSPS, for example, we wouldn't want to not recommend buying stuff to be able to respond to an emergency in the interest of saving money to meet some trigger in here. So it's trying to find that balance that works for everybody.
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah. Yes.
Isn't this pretty typical? I mean, I know the mayor called it risk sharing, but like others, I've seen others, they tied to property tax increases. It seems like a typical way to give a salary bump without it being perceval.
I've definitely worked for agencies that have given cash in lieu, if you will, lump sum payments.
And tied to something.
Mm-hmm. Tied to your own performance or something like that. How they're specifically detailed in clauses, you know, in contracts varies from city to city, but it's not uncommon for this to happen.
That's my only question.
Great. With that, I will open a public comment, seeing no members of the public present, ready to come forward. I will close public comment, bring it back to council. I will move that we adopt resolution number 90-19, approving fiscal year 2019-2020 budget adjustment for employee lump sum and equity payments per negotiated memorandum of understanding and unrepresented confidential and management employee, management benefits resolutions, and authorizing one-time lump sum payments to all qualifying full-time employees.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Heding for staff recommendation, second by Councilmember McPherson. Any discussion?
I just want to say, I really appreciate this, because I am super concerned about our employees being at the, seemingly at the bottom across the county. And I think that just every little thing that we can try to do to recognize them, my perspective is that a rising tide lifts all boats, and I think we need to keep that in the forefront, as we're, I understand there's structural deficits, and we're facing some looming challenges, and we're working hard to fix those. But I also think we just need to recognize that our employees are one of our biggest assets that the city has, and to show that, not with just our words. And so I really appreciate, you know, the council and the work of staff in pulling this together.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. I would agree with that. I will add, because I made the motion, that human capital is the most important capital in an organization, I believe. And I'm echoing your statement. Secondarily, this was a risk-sharing agreement, and a contractual obligation exists that obviously we need to honor. But also, it's a way to very much recognize the good work of our employees who understood this, I think on their own took a risk to accept it, because there was uncertainty around it. And I want to thank Dana for her work in negotiations and working through this several years ago with not only the council, but also with the employee groups and your staff. I think it's, at this time, a win-win for both the city and for our employee groups, and therefore, that's why I support it. Any other comments? Not roll call vote?
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote.
Great. Thank you. That takes us to item C4. This really, if, I might just introduce this. If you look at the very bottom of the page 345, the first page of C4, it says, "The purpose of this meeting is to provide additional opportunity for public testimony or public comment." That's what this really is. And we did receive a number of public comments earlier. So I'm going to, with your concurrence, I'm going to move directly to open public comment and see if there's any further public comment. Receive that if there is. If not, I'll close public comment. And then I believe that will end the item for the evening. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Correct.
Would you have any further opening comments with regard to this item?
Just going to briefly state that we're going to have a public hearing on November 12th.
Thank you.
When written protests will be due by, either before or at the meeting, on whether or not to add vacation rentals to T-Bid at the existing assessment rate, in the interests of encouraging public dialogue, and also requirements of state law. Tonight, public testimony has been solicited. Tonight is not a public hearing, I want to clarify. And as the mayor pointed out, we've already heard some public comments that were made at the beginning of the meeting. Otherwise, there's no action for council to take.
And of course, I'll allow questions or any discussion, but this is primarily for public comments. So with that, if there's head nods, I'll just go ahead and open public comment. Any members of the public wishing to come forward on item C-4? Please do so now. Seeing no members in the public wishing to come forward, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council, ask if there are any further questions about the public hearing, this item, or any discussion. Councilmember McPherson?
I just have one question. I'm just curious to know if we've received any emails or any other written notices from vacation rental owners on this issue.
My office has, my office has received several phone calls and five written protests.
Five protests? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. With that, that closes item C-4, and brings us to a council declaration of future agenda items.
I have one, but I don't know if it's, needs to be an agenda item?
Okay.
To weigh in on the PSPS. I know you asked the chief if there was anything council could do. I don't know if we can just go ahead and do that, or if it has to come back as an agenda item. I'd be happy if we could just do it.
Yes, and I thank you for bringing that up. The reason I asked the question was really to encourage participation in advocating for some of the things that were mentioned. With your concurrence, we've had this presentation, a prior presentation, and significant discussion on PSPS. In addition, as I mentioned, Chief Cox, Knuckles, myself, and the city manager, Mr. Collins, attended the special session several weeks ago that the county held with regard to this. If you're comfortable, let's see, and help me, Chris, because I'm, I want to make sure I'm not taking inappropriate action. If you're comfortable with our policy that allows the mayor, on issues like this, to write letters to the appropriate agencies, then we wouldn't have to agendize it. And if you're all, if I see heads nod with that, are we good to go with that? Is that a yes?
Yes, the mayor can certainly express the opinion of the mayor and express the city's needs in letters. It's when a policy position is taken, or some controversial issue potentially is weighted into, that I would suggest the council formally vote on it.
And I would obviously not do that. I would just represent the concerns that have been raised by us, and try to get that to the right parties, in conjunction with Chief Knuckles's help. Is that good? Okay. Would that be okay? Good. Thank you. Any other future agenda items? Yeah. Councilmember Heller?
So I'm kind of new to the major events in town, but I went to the Harbor Festival for the first time. That's my first major event here. I get the sense that, and in fact, I really believe that the events are a reflection of the city, and then the brand we're trying to create, and the image we're trying to create. I don't get the sense that the city, meaning the council and staff, is that heavily involved with Harbor Festival and the Avocado Margarita Festival. And I think we should be. I think there are some strengths and weaknesses there that need to be looked at, and I think maybe our involvement would help. So my proposed future agenda item would be for... So my proposed future agenda item would be for the staff to come back with some suggestions on how we could change the management structure of the major events, so that they all fall under the domain of the council.
So I'm just, again, I'm trying to understand that, for instance, the Avocado Margarita Festival is a chamber event run by the chamber for their benefit and their monetary gain and operating budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that the Harbor Festival is a private group that operates it and then donates money to various organizations. Are you looking at some kind of event management policy?
I hate the word the use. A policy would be good. There are lots of ideas on how we can do events, maybe put, have more events at the rock. I think there needs to be an umbrella oversight, whether that's committee or the council or staff, to really step up the game on these events. I was not that thrilled with Harbor Festival, and I've heard lots of negative commentary about the Avocado Margarita Festival, and that reflects on Morro Bay and those of us who are in this position. So I would like to, even though it's a chamber event, I would like the city to be overseeing it, to make sure it's the best event possible.
So that's a recommendation. I'm trying to understand the agenda item.
Well, if staff could come back with recommendations on how to implement that.
Well, but I don't know, but we've decided that we want that. We haven't voted.
Oh.
That's my point.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And so I guess what I'm, I, with some of your comments, I concur, and I see the need for maybe looking at that. I'm wondering, though, if it could be better defined and brought back to us. I'm not sure I could agree to, because what I've heard really is a recommendation to more or less take it over, and I can't act on that, because it's.
Don't we, don't we already have some policies around events?
We do.
In the city and partnerships with the chamber, and then we have the tourism department that does some things.
Evaluations.
I mean, I think we already have quite a few things in place, no?
Maybe I could offer a suggestion that we kind of put a pause on this one, because at the next council meeting, I think November 12th, is when the partnership policy was going to come back for review, per the staff report that we discussed earlier. Maybe some of those concerns would be addressed in that, or it could be refined based on what's brought back on that. Because part of that could be a city-sponsored event, and what does that mean? What does a partnership mean? So maybe we're, got a little bit of the cart before the horse, and we just pause on that one until the next.
That's a good suggestion. I like it. Thank you.
Falls underneath, okay, good. That makes sense, and it looks like we have concurrence with that, so. Any other future agenda items? Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, at 5:30 PM at the Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 209 Surf Street, Morro Bay, California. Thank you and good evening.